Good morning, everyone. I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. It's June 17th. It's 10:01 a.m. And before we get into everything, I just wanted to address some of the political unrest that we've been seeing in our country. And we have the Girl Scouts here. And that is such a fun treat, and I'm going to have them lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But before I do, I thought it would be really great if we centered ourselves in how we want to treat each other today, how commissioners want to treat each other, how the public should treat each other and commissioners. And I thought it would be really great if we listened to the Girl Scout law. And so I wanted to read it for us to just remember how we want to treat each other with dignity today. The Girl Scout law. "I will do my best to be honest and fair, friendly and helpful, considerate and caring, courageous and strong, and responsible for what I do and what I say, and respect others and myself, respect authority, use resources wisely, make the world a better place, and be a sister or a brother to every Girl Scout." So I'd love if we could start that way. And now if our special guests, Faith McRae, Jessalyn McRae, Olivia McRae, Ann Nelson, and Jan Obrich could please lead us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beautiful job, ladies. Thank you so much. We'll now move into roll call. Madam Clerk.
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jean Herman, Vice Chair.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Andriola.
Present.
Assistant County Manager Dave Solaro.
Here.
Chief Deputy District Attorney Mike Large.
Here.
And I'm Yvonne Strickland, Deputy Clerk.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into public comment. Mr. Solaro.
Item number three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Paul White, followed by Terry Brooks.
The dictionary defines murder as "the unlawful and unjustified killing of someone." Based on that definition, about 36 hours ago on Sunday evening, all of the commissioners, county manager, volunteers of America, and the forever dishonest Public Information Office, all of you contributed to the de facto murder of local resident and longtime CARES Campus client and meth addict John B., better known on the Reno streets as Paris. Paris died last Sunday evening unnecessarily and horribly for the following reasons. He was not strong enough on his own to quit the meth addiction that killed him. When he came to all of you for help at the CARES Campus, you only made his addiction worse because you allow unlimited drug use in that facility and tell clients like Paris a deadly lie, that they don't have to stop using drugs to have a good life. And you sell that lie to these addicts by giving them every material thing money can buy. Paris bought into your lie, and it killed him. All of you have chosen to maintain this program that supports this lie and allows drug use because it's the only way you can continue collecting mega millions of dollars and fund this failed program every year. I've offered you a privately funded, church-run, alternative program. None of you have shown any interest in even discussing it. It's an issue of money versus lives, and lives like Paris's mean nothing to any of you. I've reached out repeatedly to every one of you, and not one has expressed a willingness to go inside the CARES Campus with me and see firsthand and unannounced how many lives it is destroying, to see what all of you are allowing at that campus and hiding from the community. Your actions in allowing the CARES program to continue are absolutely unlawful, unjustifiable, and directly contributed to Paris's death. So by definition, Paris did not pass on. He was de facto murdered by your cold-hearted indifference that allows the CARES program to continue. Thomas Jefferson once said, "I tremble when I recall that God is just." I don't know if you're part in Paris's death and dozens just like him. I don't know if it makes any of you tremble, but it certainly should.
Next speaker.
Terry Brooks, followed by Ann Nelson and Jessalyn McRae.
It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And I come here with an obligation to start sharing some of my thoughts on the subject of discrimination. A lot of people discriminate against others just because of their race. They think they can build themselves up by putting others in a lower place. A lot of people discriminate against others because of their gender, but by doing so, they put themselves in the position of an offender. A lot of people discriminate against others because of their age. That is a really dumb old form of discrimination in which to engage. A lot of people discriminate against others because of a disability. That form of discrimination also has full unacceptability. A lot of people discriminate against others because of their culture. That form of discrimination might be a form of counterculture. A lot of people discriminate against others because of their so-called class. That is just another excuse to try to get to harass. A lot of people discriminate against others because they want to oppress anyone who is not like them, even the poor and the homeless. Many people are discriminated against in a lot of ways, and discrimination in housing is just one of those many ways. People have been discriminated against when it comes to education and have been discriminated against when it comes to occupation. Discrimination even occurs in the field of health, and discrimination occurs when there is a lack of wealth. Discrimination is often the subject of politics and is a major factor in the field of economics. I'm looking into discrimination and the victims of and all the subjects and fields that I've mentioned above. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back when I got a lot more to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Ann Nelson and Jessalyn McRae, followed by Pam Roberts.
Madam Chair, members of the county commission, thank you so much for hosting the Girl Scouts of the Sierra Nevada today. As most of you know, our council represents all of northern Nevada and a little sliver of eastern California as we help build girls of courage, confidence, and character who are deeply embedded in our community, who do a lot of community service, and who are very connected with our community. So I'm very excited to appear with these three McRae sisters before all of you today as we continue to raise money for our local council.
My name is Jessalyn McRae.
My name is Olivia McRae.
My name is Faith McRae.
I'm with Troop 491, and we have 4,000 cases of cookies that we are challenging the community to purchase to support Girl Scouts of the Sierra Nevada. We're launching the Great Girl Scout Cookie Buyout. We challenge Alexis Hill to be a cookie hero and buy cases of cookies, not boxes.
Wonderful. Well, I accept the challenge, and I want to buy quite a few boxes for our senior center because I think our seniors would love some dessert. So I will then challenge our sheriff to buy some cases of Girl Scout cookies. And Nancy Fennell, it's my understanding she's going to be challenging all of Dixon Realty to buy Girl Scout cookies. And I'd like my whole board to join in. And so it's $20 a case, correct?
I'll take five.
What?
$50.
$50, sorry. I just made a discount. All right, $50 a case. And so I challenge the rest of my board to step up. Okay, Commissioner Andriola is taking two cases, and Commissioner Garcia is taking two, and Vice Sheriff Herman, two cases. Okay, I'm going to do two cases as well. And Commissioner Clark?
I'd like 10 cases.
There you go. Yay.
And they're all going to go to my house.
Oh, wonderful.
Actually, I will share them. Thank you.
Okay, so we will connect with you, get you your money, and we'll get our cookies later. But thank you so much for coming down, and thank you for making this world a better place. You really inspire us, and we'll continue to try to be as wonderful as you are in our positions as commissioners. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Pam Roberts, followed by Maureen McElroy.
My name is Pam Roberts. I am the Chair of the Senior Advisory Board, so thank you for bringing the cookies over to the seniors. I am here to talk about a position that we just lost, a really valuable staff person with senior services, Bill Ciro. He is, or was, the Senior Activities Coordinator. He had a 20-hour contract, and he was such an inspiration. I mean, we're talking about an individual who was impacting the lives of hundreds, if not thousands, of our seniors. He was connecting people both at the senior center here next door and our other outlying satellite areas. And the reason he left was because he asked for an additional 10, maybe 32 hours instead of 20, or 40 hours instead of 20, because he couldn't really make ends meet. He loved his job. He was doing amazing things. And when I look at the strategic plan for Washoe County, number three, vulnerable populations. Identify and triage the most vulnerable population as identified by community need and work together cross-departmentally and regionally to provide adequate resources and support. That's what that job does. He connects the seniors to a lot of different departments. Then you go over to your achievements, and under there it says, "A diverse range of senior programming activities being offered to maintain engagement." One of the things we're learning with the senior board, because we've been working on an updated master plan for seniors, is that that engagement is so critical to our mental and emotional and physical health. And so I am speaking to this board to start asking staff to dedicate an extra $20,000 a year, okay, for that position. It's been approved in your budget for 20 as a contract position. I think that this county deserves to have a full-time Senior Activities Coordinator. And whether Bill will come back or not, I'm hoping he will, but if he isn't, we're going to have to find a way to clone that man because he was amazing. And I say to this board, we need to put our money where our mouth is, and our seniors constitute a huge percentage of our population. We need to take care of them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts, and we'll look into that.
Maureen McElroy, followed by Donna Klontz.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak this morning. I always appreciate it. For the record, my name is Maureen McElroy. I'm a native Nevadan and a longtime Reno resident. I'm here today speaking in regards to Agenda Item Six, F1, and I urge you to reappoint Tammy Ruff as a trustee for the Washoe County Library System. This is a really important time for the library system in regards to planning and preparing for its future. The Library Board and Library Administration are due to complete its strategic plan, to review its policies, and to work on recruiting a new library director. Trustee Ruff is eminently qualified, is currently the only library trustee board member who was a former librarian. During this time of growth and change for our Washoe County library system, I really think appointing, reappointing Tammy Ruff will provide the knowledge and consistency the Library Board of Trustees currently needs. Thank you for this time to speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Donna Klontz, followed by DeAndre Burleson. Ms. Klontz has documents to be distributed.
Good morning, commission. My name's Donna Klontz. I also serve on the Washoe County Senior Advisory Board as an advisor, as a past vice chair of that group, have spent many years working with our senior community as a volunteer. As Pam described to you today, the loss of Bill Ciro is a very serious issue for our senior community. Yesterday, I took some time to visit every one of our sites where the meals were being served, to talk to the seniors about the loss of Bill, and asked them to take a look at this petition and sign it if they agreed with it. And I told them I was coming to the commission this morning to make public comment. And so we've got over 100 signatures that I gathered in just about three hours yesterday morning, going from Ninth Street to Sun Valley to Spanish Springs to Cold Springs, Sparks Senior Center, Westbrook, to talk to the seniors that were there, that knew Bill, because he visited every one of those sites on a regular basis and prepared and created activities that they wanted to participate in. It caused them to tell friends, and they started bringing more seniors in, which is our goal. We know, as Pam said, that being isolated is a health risk. It causes all of us to be sicker, and so being with others helps us remain healthy, both physically and emotionally. And so keeping something like this, keeping this position as part of our senior activities every single day is really, really important. As Pam said, she referenced your own master plan. The senior board has been working on its master plan for the last year, updating activities that we want to and recommendations that we want to give to this board and to senior services. And our master plan includes increasing social engagement and reducing social isolation, which includes creating programs like this, and also neighborhood supports. And we even reference in that, that job, that volunteer coordinator, as someone who could help us keep connecting our seniors and bringing them into our centers to receive resources and remain socially engaged. So I wanted you to know that the senior community really appreciates, really appreciated Bill, and keeping that position is vital. So we want your help to figure out a way to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klontz. DeAndre Burleson, followed by Penny Brock.
My name is Deon. Excuse me. Good morning. My name is DeAndre Burleson, and I'm here before you to give you an update of my status. I went to the Reno Housing Authority, and she said that she doesn't need any, she does not need any more information from me. My file has been completed, and she's waiting for three properties to become available, with units available, I guess, and once that's available, she'll give me a call. So that's good news. This is my standard, things I like to show you, my case managers for the community court that I'm actively dealing with. This is my standard expenditures, waiting for housing authority, I guess. Just like to share that with you. Okay. Now, while, while under court care, this is what occurred to me. I went to sleep between the Eddies and the Wild River and went to sleep, pulled the covers over my head, and somebody struck me with some kind of force-blunt object. And so it discombobulated my eye. So my eye was sunk in. Long story short, I called the police, we made a report, and before it got out of hand, we tried to deal with that in a diplomatic manner. So I wanted to share that with you. And then the last thing I want to share with you is that, from my understanding, I was welcome, not that I'm not welcome, to receive ice out of the ice machine. And so I was confronted, not confronted, but I guess confronted in essence by an employee or a security guard in regards to a cup of ice. And so due to my medical condition, I didn't think it was that over the top in regards to a cup of ice. So I guess I'm saying that to say that I was denied ice for water and for my medical. My medical health insurance number is Medicare 3K-U3-M76-TG99. Other than that, all is well.
Thank you, Mr. Burleson. And congratulations.
Thank you.
It's been amazing to watch you through your housing journey, and I'm so excited that you're getting close here. So congratulations.
All right. Thank you.
Penny Brock, followed by Trista Gomez.
Penny Brock, for the record. So I'm here to update you on election integrity. Things are happening in Washington, D.C. This is hot off the press. The FBI has documents which reveal the CCP produced fake U.S. driver's license to skew the 2020 election with fake mail-in ballots for Joe Biden. FBI Director Cash Patel handed over the documents to Senate Judiciary Committee Chairman Chuck Grassley yesterday, June 16th. This was a story out of just the news. Cash Patel gives Congress intel on Chinese interference in the 2020 election, mass-producing fake mail-in ballots. These were sent to the states. It is suspected they went to the swing states, of which Nevada is a swing state. Washoe County is one of the seven swing counties. I wanted to bring this to your attention because Cash Patel is going to be investigating this. He said before he was appointed FBI Director, "If I am appointed FBI Director, I will be investigating elections in several states," and he named Nevada. So I come before you to let you know that Cash Patel may be knocking at the door of our register of voter office and at the county manager office and all those involved in our elections. So I'm here to give you this, you know, bring this to your attention so you will not be surprised should that happen here in Washoe County. This is very serious, and I hope that you will take that as such, very serious. You have been warned since 2021. Many of our citizens have come before you, especially after the elections, and told you horror story after horror story about what happened in the register of voter office. 2024 was no exception. You can go back in the record and look at the many that were observers and so on and came before you. My story, I was denied the right to vote at the DePole Junior High School. Denied the right to vote. That is my constitutional right, and yet they denied me the right to vote at DePole Junior High School. I hope that I have the chance to tell that to Cash Patel someday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trista Gomez.
I'm here to talk about the county manager situation, and, you know, for years, we had a superintendent situation, you know, for Washoe County, and they would hire in other people and hire in other people, and it was kind of problem after problem after problem. And then finally, they did a community survey, and the community survey, I think, really talked about trying to get somebody who culturally was in Reno and knew our population, and, you know, we had record of how they were and who they were and what they did. And we now have a local superintendent. I think it's much more homeostasis. I think it's a good situation. And I think that, I'm relating that to the county manager because now we're looking at the situation where we've had this, you know, pretty, you know, I kind of think of it this way, you guys had one job, one job, and the one job was to make sure that county residents had the same quality of life or better when you guys took over and when the county manager took over, as you did when you left. And we have crazy traffic, fatal accidents. My insurance with young drivers went up 25%, 25% in the valleys because of, because there's so many accidents, not for any of our fault, because there's so many accidents. People are sitting in traffic. Our budget is out of control. You got, there's programming that we cannot sustain, there's unsustainable revenue needs, and this is what we're dealing with. And what I say is, I would really appreciate, I have had one conversation with Dave Solaro, one. I know people who have worked under Dave Solaro, and I've had zero with Kate Thomas, and I've known people who've worked under Kate Thomas. And right now, what I'm asking you to do is pause on this interim director of Kate Thomas. There seems to be some ethical issues with her having a relationship with Ms. Hill. I don't know if that's true or not. It's simply a rumor. I would like to know if that's true. I, knowing the people who've worked under both Mr. Solaro and Ms. Thomas, I would, if I had my brothers, try to talk about Mr. Solaro as an interim. I don't know if he wants that job. I have no idea. But right now, to name another interim county manager without maybe community input, I would like to see, I would like to have some community input. I would like there to be a community survey. I would like there to be a non-urgency about possibly this small vacancy and really do a calculated and good-for-everybody decision and not just rush into something. There's no urgency in this. You have two capable people. But I would ask you to pause today. Pause. That's what I'm asking you to do.
Roger Edwards.
Good morning, Roger Edwards, for the record. 50-year resident of Washoe County, and I've been coming to these meetings since 1974, just for the record. And I'm impressed now with the fact that I don't have to talk about my water recharge refund anymore, and I certainly appreciate you guys getting that taken care of. But also, what I'm concerned about, and when you talked about- about, and when you talked about it at your last meeting a little bit, was about the costs of employees. It's a major cost when we're here. And I'm a retiree, so I know a little bit about this. I enjoy my check and I don't know how you guys could possibly do it. 3,100 employees you currently have on, on staff right now. And they're going to be retirees at some time. And you're going to have to pay them, you know, 50, 60, 70% of their base pay in retirement. And how, and now we live long enough, now we can get, have as many years in retirement as we had working. And that's going to, that's going to be a killer. And you can only keep, keep raising taxes so much before the population just moves out of the county entirely. So think about that when you think about hiring. And think about the M-word for a minute. Hiring moratorium. You need it for the building and you should have it for hiring also. All right? I'm just worried about us. You and I are us. We're us. So think about it, please. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Russell Burrell speaking virtually from Gerlach.
Hello, Russell Byerly, for the record, speaking from Gerlach. You all know me. I wear a lot of hats here. I am the Gerlach GID Public Works Supervisor. I am the Treasurer of the Volunteer Fire Department. I also sit on the Gerlach Empire Cab. And I am here to speak today on item 15, contract with Washoe County and Royal Ambulance Company for Emergency Medical Services for the Gerlach market. This is the foundation of a good plan, but it's not a complete plan. I do think the Commissioners should approve this contract, but it has several serious flaws. First, it commits the use of the Gerlach Fire Station to Royal Ambulance. Washoe County does not own the Gerlach Fire Station. The Gerlach GID does. I've spoken to the board and they're willing to have an emergency meeting so they can approve a lease to prevent an interruption in service for Gerlach here. And that's something that we need to do in two weeks, I believe, two weeks from today, is when Royal is hoping to take over our emergency medical. And we can make it work on that timeline, but we do need to bring all the stakeholders to the table, not just the GID, but also the Gerlach Volunteer Fire Department, who I believe will be responsible for fire service. We haven't really worked out any kind of arrangement with anybody. We don't know any details who we'll be reporting to, whether there's any funding available, whether we'll be under the county's insurance, that sort of thing. And those are details that we have 14 days now to work out. We would really like to hear from a representative of the county to start hammering out those specifics. And then third, the most pressing issue with this contract is that it covers full-time paramedic and EMT for a level of care called Advanced Life Support, ALS, for eight months out of the year. But for four months, it's a paramedic only, which is not a level of care that's recognized by the State of Nevada EMS Office. I spoke to them yesterday and they will not, they cannot approve this plan as written. So that puts us in a situation where on December 1st, the contract says that they'll step down to a single paramedic. So approving this contract today might get us to December 1st, or it might not go into effect. I don't really, I'm not qualified to speak on how that works. However, when I spoke to them yesterday, State EMS was planning to have a representative in chambers today to answer any questions that the Commissioners might have regarding this contract. Also, this is the only time we're going to be able to comment on this item. I spoke to county staff this morning and was told that the item itself is not eligible for remote comment. So only general comment at the beginning of the meeting is going to be allowed here from Gerlach. Also, I have, would you like to speak? I have a late arrival. County staff, can we squeeze in one more? Is it too late?
No, you absolutely. I mean, you can finish your remarks. You've got 17 seconds here.
I think that's, that's close enough. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
We have another speaker, Tina Walters.
Okay.
Hi. Sorry I'm late. So my, I guess my concern is with Royal Ambulance and, oh, I just, I just feel like it's, there hasn't been enough research done on, on solutions for our fire and EMS up here. Thank you.
What's your name again?
Tina Walters.
Walters. Thank you. We have nobody else signed in. Thank you very much. All right. With that, we will now move into our Commissioners and County Manager announcements. Mr. Solaro.
Yeah. Item number four is your Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports and Updates to Include Boards and Commission Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Agendas.
Do you have anything for us today?
Just one, just one item. Washoe County staff, we're still tracking changes at the federal level. Lots of things in the news, discussions around Lands Bill and funding changes. And so I just wanted to let this board know, as we gather information, we'll be sure to package that up and put the truthful information, as we know it, in front of you. It, it changes very rapidly. And so we just want to make sure that we get the right information in front of you in the right amount of time. So just wanted to make sure you are aware that we are, we're doing that.
Coming. To, to be...
As soon as we can verify a bunch of different things.
Okay.
Absolutely. Comes before you.
Thank you so much. All right. And Vice Chair Herman.
So I was concerned about the fact that Mr. Byerly said that he was told that he wouldn't be able to speak on item 15.
Yeah. I'm surprised about that, too, because it affects Gerlach. So that just must be an oversight. And as Chair, I can allow it.
Okay.
Yeah, when we get there.
I plan on taking 15 out of the block vote so they have a chance to speak.
Wonderful.
At the time that this is brought before us. So I think that'll, that's enough.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. And Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy Father's Day, everybody. All the dads in the room, stepdads, adoptive dads, father figures. Thank you for all that you do for our families. Huh?
Great-grandfathers.
Great-grandfathers. You're right. Thank you. I wanted to let you know, I wrote an op-ed today in RGJ about parks, funding, parks access, and parks infrastructure. I hope you can check it out. It's, I kick it off with sharing some data on the two-year project that I conducted with Sierra Nevada Journeys. And it showed some really stark inequities for some of our low-income students in Reno, Sparks, and Sun Valley. And then the next portion kind of reflects back on the budget cuts that we faced during and after the Great Recession and recovering for that and preparing for the next round of fiscal constraints that we'll be facing and making sure that the level of service that our constituents are asking for can be met. And then the last step or part of the op-ed was a call to action. There's a joint meeting coming up on Thursday, June 26th, at 5:00 PM. And that's going to be held at the City Reno Council Chambers. And the reason why I would love for you all to get involved is this is kind of the first major step in the public process, to get your input, your ideas, your thoughts. And if you love parks, if you love trails and you love open space, this is the time to step up and get involved. It's really easy. You can just show up to the meeting and, and learn about the Parks District Service Plan that we'll be talking about. And as the year or two progresses, we'll be inching closer and closer to a real viable positive solution that we could face regionally. But we need your input and we'd love for you to get engaged. And last but not least, just a quick announcement. I won't be in attendance at the next, next week's BCC meeting. I have my Education Commission meeting in Las Vegas, so I won't be able to tune in either. So those are all my comments for today.
Thank you. And thank you for all your work on behalf of our parks and open space for Washoe County. Commissioner Andrea.
Thank you. A couple announcements. One, I'll also echo all the fathers and grandfathers and great-grandfathers. It was a great day to celebrate. I want to let everyone know the Spanish Springs Cab on July 2nd will be hosting RTC. And they have a lot of information they'll be sharing. So I hope everyone in Spanish Springs, or everyone can attend. You don't have to be in Spanish Springs, but it's going to be focused on that particular area. So I think you'll find it super beneficial and understand how the process works. There will be a focus specifically on how you go through to request traffic signals. There's a lot of times that I get requests about having traffic signals. And so we thought that would be helpful, the board. And I thought that would be extremely helpful. So there'll be more than just that, but I thought I'd bring that up. I also would like to share that on August 16th, it's a save the date. It's a pet memorial that is going to be unveiled at the Link Piazza Park in Hidden Valley, which is in my district. So save the date, 9:00 AM, the unveiling. And like to thank staff for really coming up with a great concept in terms of really honoring pets. And a part of that is with Guy Clifton, who spent every waking moment at that park. And I don't know if I'm going to accurately get this quote correct, but technically, a canine could have no better friend than Guy Clifton, period. I want to be a dog and be raised by Clifton. I mean, he really made an impact to our community in many ways. But I think that this will be a special opportunity for everyone to show their respect for their loved fur babies. So August 16th at 9:00 AM. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. He was, someone said where?
Link Piazza Park in Hidden Valley. The dog park in Hidden Valley that was donated by Link Piazza.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a few items I'd like to just talk about, comment about. I'm glad to see that Pam Roberts is here with the Senior Advisory Board for Washoe County, along with Donna, and Donna Kluens, and Mac. Mac is here as well, along with Terry. And they brought up a very good point. When Bill Ciro was the coordinator for activities for seniors, this was more like he was dealing with family members. He was everywhere. He helped everyone he could. He was very, very helpful with many things. He got his, I guess, commercial license so he could drive around the bus that the Lifestyle Foundation donated to seniors, took people on field trips, took them into Carson City, took them on, took them to museums, shopping, medical, just really all-around helpful person, was everywhere and doing everything from here to Cold Springs to Sparks to Reno, all of the senior centers. So it's unfortunate that, you know, he took the job initially as a part-time job and then he needed more hours. And, and he finally, with the cost of everything and then the economy, needed more, more hours and, and went looking for another job. I understand, I got an email from somebody at the county that, I think it was, Cara probably sent me that, about the county had found money for him, but meanwhile, I think he's accepted a position somewhere else. So very few people are irreplaceable, but he comes pretty close to it. Just an excellent person and really helpful for the seniors. And it's very unfortunate that he had to go elsewhere. I hope we can find somebody to, to fill his shoes. And he did a great job. We'll miss him. Next, I've got a request, again, with senior center up in Cold Springs. They've been asking for a number of months, if not years, for several sandwich signs to put out on, in front of their facility. So folks in that community know that their senior lunch is there. So I've been, they've been told that the signs have been ordered and they haven't seen them. So their request is to get a couple of sandwich signs to put out in front of Cold Springs Senior Center there. Also, they used to have, and I don't know if she worked at the Health Department or where she came from, but there was a nurse that came in once or twice a month during the lunch hour and took blood pressure for the seniors. And they really appreciated that. And they haven't seen her for a while. So I don't know if somebody from staff can look into that. Fire stations, we keep talking about, I keep talking about it. And, and I'm sorry that the Commissioners are upset about my actions, but, you know, somebody waiting 15 minutes for, to vote on something versus somebody waiting for six, five to six, seven years for a fire station and being misled that they were going to get a fire station. And these are taxpayers. These are citizens. These are folks that are paying money to the fire board and are led to believe they're going to get something and they don't get something. So that was my way of peacefully protesting the, just a lack of transparency and honesty towards the folks. With that in mind, we just heard from somebody from Gerlach and they still have a volunteer fire, fire station there. We've got at least two locations in Washoe Valley that could be reconstituted and brought back and maybe look into having volunteer fire stations there. That would at least be a Band-Aid for the problem that we have out there. So I'm asking the, the county and to look into volunteer firemen in Washoe Valley. Last week at the meeting, the Chair, the County Manager said that my questions have been answered about bus tickets. And they, it's a yes and a no. I asked where the bus tickets were going and to reunite families. So which families? Are these folks coming from senior centers? Are these folks coming from CARES campus? Where are these folks departing from and where are we sending them to? So that's a follow-up question on the other question. And that's all my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to make an announcement and hopefully they stick around for a bit. But if not, the Commissioners, we can coordinate later. But the Girl Scouts Cookie Buyout Van is parked in the roundabout. So anyone in the audience who is interested in buying a $50 box of, of the giant box of cookies, they're discounted in, by half. And that's the same spot where the, where you see food trucks in that roundabout. So they'll be there for a bit of time. So if you're interested, we want to help our Girl Scouts. All right. With that, we will now move into our presentations. Mr. Solaro.
Item number five is a presentation by Dana Cersey, Division Director of Housing and Homeless Services from the Human Services Agency, sorry, here to provide an update on housing and homeless services to the board.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Dana Cersey from the Human Services Agency, here to give an update on housing and homeless services. I want to start with a quick apology on the late presentation arrival. The data is literally hot off the press and we had already delayed this from May. So we wanted to do everything we could to bring this to you. There is a lot of content in these slides. Definitely not going to be able to do a lot of detail in 10 minutes, but I wanted to get this in front of you and hope that this will be the beginning of future conversations. So I want to take a moment to recall where we have been. There has been an enormous amount of work since homelessness transitioned to Washoe County in September of 2021. And the mission of that work has not been just for the county to provide quality services, but more to expand the capacity and to build a system in our community where the community can bring forward these services. There was a huge focus on centralizing data. When we first started, we were looking at about 40% of programs reporting into HMIS. That's Central Homeless Database. We're now over 90%. This is a list of MOU partners, over 40, that are not contracts, but just agreements to provide services alongside us. There was also a focus on increasing shelter capacity. Between the Our Place and Nevada CARES Campus projects, the shelter capacity was more than tripled. Those single beds there, we went from 228 to over 750 beds. We also lowered barriers and enhanced the service model, which allowed more people to be able to access those shelters and has led to a significant decrease in those living unsheltered in our community. We also have focused on increasing our outreach. And this has been done through regional client staffing meetings and partnerships, like those, that list of MOU partners I just had up. And also our Sheriff's Office Hope Team. All of these projects have allowed us to reach a lot more people than we were previously able to reach. And finally, we have experimented with tenancy support, which is essentially a case manager following people into housing. And we've proven its success with the Emergency Housing Voucher Program. in which still we're seeing over 90% of people remain stably housed. So we're going to switch gears over to current status and a lot of this data that we're presenting. You're familiar with these next couple of slides. We continue to update you on the progress of permanent housing placements. This is over 1,100 permanent placements from CARES Campus, Our Place, and the Sheriff's Office Hope Team, and just since July of 2023. We are not seeing, and in previous presentations, we said we were watching that senior number really close, but we're happy to see it stabilize a little. We're still seeing seniors age 55 and above is what we report, just over 40% of the people that we serve. And we're still at about 52% having a disability. Okay, so we're going to go into the complicated data. We have two big sets of new data today. The first one we're going to talk about is where people are coming from. And this has been a request from you all and our community. So last year, we took a close look at what we were reporting and what we were collecting related to this. So we follow HUD standards during the intake process so that that data aligns with what we are required to report out. But that was not answering the questions that we had. And so specifically, in July of last year, we added to our intake, where are people coming from and whether they were homeless or not when they moved to the area? And here is a look at that data. You can see that of the people who were homeless when they moved to the area, most of them are coming from California and Nevada. This graph shows a monthly, monthly data since we started comparing. That light purple on the bottom, which is a little difficult to tell on this screen, but that is the number of people who are entering homelessness in each month total, and the light purple is who's coming from outside the area. You can see the percentage at the top, and in recent months, that number is coming down. We've worked with our staff to directly communicate out to those jurisdictions who are sending people here and communicate that we cannot accept people from outside our area, and we're here to serve our local residents. So switching over to the second set of data is our by-name list. And this has been updated, and this is probably the most complex piece of data we're going to share today. We could spend an hour on it. So it will seem pretty fast, but I'm happy to answer questions. When we started with Built for Zero in 2020 and started talking about building our by-name list, we were the first community in the country to produce an actively homeless count for all five sub-populations, and to use HMIS to do that. It was pretty uncommon at the time. We built the method based on the system at the time, and as programs have been added and the way that they are using HMIS has changed, we were at the point where we needed to make quite a bit of an update. So we've been spending the last several months digging into this. I do want to thank Built for Zero, our partners in this, their data team has been helping us. And there is actually a grant on the board today, on the board agenda, to help cover the cost of these updates within HMIS. And also just recognize that our team remains committed to continuous improvement, and this data will continue to change as we grow and change. So this, what you're looking at, is two different graphs. The initial is the darker line on the bottom, and the revised count is the lighter line on the top. We concluded about two years of data here, so you can see that over time, we're not seeing this huge increase in the number of people experiencing homelessness, but more this is truly a different way of counting. And for this count, different than our point-in-time count, which is a snapshot of one single day, we look at activity over a full 90 days, which is why this traditionally shows significantly higher than our point-in-time count. And right now, what we're trying to do is cast a broader net and make sure that we have the most comprehensive data available. So we're going to talk through an example. Let's take the example of a person entering into the emergency shelter. You can see that list on the lower left here of programs that would qualify as counting someone, and services do not count. And the idea of that is that you might be staying at the campus, but you might go down to Catholic Charities to get a meal, or you may be signed up with an MCO provider to receive your insurance case management. Those are things that we don't want to count people more than once, so that's why services are taken out of this. So a person enters into shelter and then leaves shelter, and later, maybe he's staying in a motel for a little while, but is still on his MCO case management service. In the first count, he would not have been counted because the most recent enrollment was in a service instead of a bed. And so that's why we've changed it to look at all activity over 90 days. And if you're touching the shelter system or any of our housing programs within that 90 days, then we're going to go ahead and count, and that's really the difference that you're seeing. So what's happening with the count? It's relatively stable. You can see over these last two years, there is a couple hundred leveled decrease this year, May and April of this year versus same time last year. Those two little bumps you can see are because of the winter time, as more people enter in over the winter season. And no surprise here, this is all occurring because we have rental assistance drying up. Our rents are still fairly high. This is a look at what will be on our website, and as I mentioned, this is hot off the press. We're updating this right now on the website. But this will go into more details of the different categories and the data changes online, and will be available for everyone today. Okay, and current challenges. One, I wanted to pull this slide up because what we are doing is having an impact. This is a slide that Brooke Page showed to you all during the Strategic Plan Workshop. And it is really important to know that the investment that you all are providing is really having an impact on this community. We're seeing much less increases than the rest of the country, but we are still seeing these rising rent costs. This is a comparison of rent related to wages and unemployment rates, which are still increasing a little, and we are above the national average there. This is a look at our subsidized units, and we are still not seeing a significant increase of units as a percentage of population. So what is all of this telling us? First and foremost, again, as we know, no surprises here, but rents continue to rise. We have affordable housing, units are not keeping pace with the population growth in the area. Unemployment remains elevated. Existing resources are stretched thin, depleting or being cut, and few new resources are on the horizon. Also, there's some fairly large unknowns here with some of the federal funding shifts related to housing vouchers and Medicaid. And so what's our response to all this? It's stay the course. We continue to evaluate everything we're doing to fine-tune and make sure that things are being used in the most appropriate and efficient way. And so for our upcoming work, one, we are still continuing to focus on data. We have some, a few key partners that we still need inside HMIS. Also, on today's agenda is the data policy for the county, which says any money that you all approve going to a homeless program will be required to report into HMIS so that we can provide outcomes to you. Also, we're working, we're going to continue working with other communities to look for answers within their own community instead of sending people our way. Our Shallow Subsidy Program is funded with ARPA money, and that's the program that we are trying to not increase shelter beds, but still house people while they wait for their name to come up on the housing voucher list. So looking forward to sharing some updates on how that goes. And then housing, we have a lot of units coming online. Probably our most exciting for us agenda item is a huge grant coming in from the state of Nevada to fund all of the services at the Supportive Housing Building. And that is for approval today. We also are continuing our work with Corporation of Supportive Housing on community education and work to align our regional processes related to building affordable housing. And then also just wanted to give a shout out to the Community Services Department for all their work in the Invisio-Washoe Master Plan to align those planning procedures also. All right, and that's all I have for you today. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Well, I think that one of the big lessons that we are learning as part of this is housing is key because we don't want people to live forever in the emergency shelter. And I know that this board has discussed options to look into how we can support that, and we've done it with zoning. But I think for a future workshop, we do need to talk about how we want to tackle this permanent supportive housing, or as Commissioner Andrea Laus called it, dignity housing, to help our seniors who cannot afford to pay these astronomical rents and are ending up in our homeless shelter and disabled community members who have no family. So I will go down the line and have commissioners ask questions or comments. Vice Chair Hartman. Okay, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you so much for the presentation. It'll take me a while to digest all the data, but I agree. I was going to kick off by saying the same thing, what we as policymakers owe you is more tenancy support, more access to permanent supportive housing units. We need affordable housing units. We need the missing middle to be, to continue to be a major focus for our region to develop. All of those pieces, I mean, you'll just continue to spin your wheels all day long in emergency shelter if we don't address those larger systemic issues. So I know that us at the local level, at the state level, we're all not losing, are taking our eye off of that goal for you, so we'll keep talking about that. But I'm just curious, out of the, you said 91%, I mean, moving from 40% HMIS, being compliant with HMIS to 91% is a huge success. But what are the holdouts saying? Why can't we get to that 100% mark? What is that last 9% saying is a challenge or barrier, or they're just not into it?
Yes, a couple of things. One is cost. A lot of our nonprofits, it does cost to have a license. We addressed that early with ARPA dollars to put a little bit of funding towards covering for a year or two because we hoped that people would see that benefit. We've adjusted our structure a little bit. Last board meeting, the interlocal with Clark County was signed, which is a slight update to the way that licensing is done so that the county can help buy in bulk and reduce the licensing costs, which is going to help us a little bit. And the big one is the dual systems. You know, the biggest piece missing from HMIS is our healthcare providers, and they have a lot of systems that they're required to put data into also. So having that extra step, we have done all we can to reduce the amount of time. We've got it down to about three minutes to put in. I saw Dana, she was here today at Renown, and that type of thing as an example. And really, the idea is so that across the community, we can see that people are visiting these locations multiple times.
Okay. And then another question I had, thank you for telling us where folks are coming from. I saw some people's eyes get big in the crowd, and I think that's a data point that we've been curious about for a really, really long time. So what was the biggest barrier in trying to get you and your team to gather that data, collect that data, and showcase that data over that 90-day period? What was the biggest challenger hurdle that you guys faced?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, it's very complex and tedious. So the way that we choose to collect that data and what question we're trying to answer has a major impact. So specific to where people are coming from, we do collect information inside HMIS of where people are coming from, and that's been shown in the region a couple of times. But each time, we've left with questions like, "It doesn't quite answer my question." So it's really being specific about what are we trying to answer, and then going back and making sure that the question reflects that information. So this has definitely been a process to get to the place. But last summer, I think we had some open conversations with you all and with our partners, Downtown ambassadors, that were really clear with, we need to know not where someone is coming from, but were they homeless when they got here? And if so, where were they sent from? And that is a very different question. So, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrea La.
Thanks. I do have a few questions, but I'm going to piggyback off of the comment or the questions in terms of what you just answered with, where are people coming from? Because, you know, that's always trying to kind of pinpoint that. And to your point specifically that you just made about the big question or a significant question, were they homeless when they got here? Right? Or when they arrived, did they become homeless? So you mentioned during your presentation, in the context of that space, about reaching out to some of the areas, in this case, it looks like a high numbers from California. And I'm just wondering if you could speak, when you shared reaching out, I wasn't sure, are you reaching out to help share if they're sending people here or what they're doing? There could be smaller communities. We have already verified that there's been some folks, even in Nevada, that are not from Washoe County, that have arrived in Washoe County. So I wonder if you could speak to that point on how you're approaching, not only out of state but in-state, because we can't be everything to everyone? And if we have everyone coming and we don't have the funds to support that transition, you know, how do you address that balance?
Yes, so in a couple of different ways. We have worked to maintain that if someone in front of us needs our help, we're going to help that person, but we're going to document where they came from, and then we're going to make a phone call to that jurisdiction. And that phone call at the case management level looks like, hey, you know, we, Dana showed up here today. She said that you gave her a bus pass, sent her along. Can we talk about that? We're not able to help people from outside of the area. Please don't do that again. We've started tracking that too, and we're pretty new into that process. So I don't have enough data to share yet. But that's kind of the idea, is to show, okay, well, I talked to this jurisdiction three times last month, and we're still getting people. Now we need to kick that up a level and get a little bit more support. We have had some conversations across Nevada, specifically with our rural counties, that they do not have as many resources as we do. And so we've had some open dialogue about maybe some potential solutions, or how did we get to some solutions? What can they consider in their own area? Again, being very line in the sand, we are not able to help people from outside the area. We have seen that's where these numbers are starting to drop. We had a conversation a couple of times about whether or not the area would be willing to take their money. Can we pay into the CARES campus and you take our people? The truth is that the CARES campus is full, and there's wait lists. And so that right now is not an option either. But we're continuing that dialogue and definitely coming to the table is, we can share what we've learned, we can share whatever resources we have access to that could help the rules also, but we cannot accept people here. So we're trying to help as much as we can, but still set that line.
Thanks. I think it would be helpful if we did have that information. I know you mentioned that you're just starting to track that and to see what, as you put it, if there seems to be a pattern that maybe isn't being honored by the relationships that you're creating, that that can be tracked as well. And then I'm just going to throw out that I'd like to reserve the opportunity, as Commissioner Garcia, to digest all this and hopefully have an opportunity to follow up. Because one of the things I'm initially thinking about is, as you know, I serve on NACO, and I think there's an opportunity here to have you come and do a presentation to NACO. All 17 counties are represented, and I think it's a topic of discussion at NACO. So I want to just throw that out, but I do want to reserve the opportunity to have a discussion. I do have a couple other questions, Madam Chair.
Continue on.
You mentioned about, and in the slide, I was, I can't remember which one I was trying to find, but how many people are waiting for housing? There is a waitlist. How many people are approximately waiting for housing?
Related to permanent housing, yes. Well, everyone who's homeless is waiting. Um, we, well, everyone who's homeless is waiting for housing. We do have our, our community queue, which is that HUD system. Everyone coming into the system is provided the same assessment. We have about 500 people on our waitlist related to permanent supportive housing and our rapid rehousing in that scoring range. We previously had identified the number of supportive housing units that are actually needed based on the estimates of our overall population. I'm happy to send all that out again.
That would be great. What is that number? Is it like 1,100?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, I thought I remembered that number. Hopefully, that number will continue to go down somehow in terms of, as things are constructed to, to accommodate that. The other question I have is, you know, you mentioned in the very beginning of your presentation, and I, I wrote this down, I don't know if it's the exact thing you said, but you said since 2021, the, the goal essentially was to expand capacity to build a system where the community could actually come together to provide these services. And you had the list of all of the, so, and you put obviously the challenge of funding, and everyone is going through, kind of wrestling with that. And I'm wondering, long-term, is there an opportunity that you believe Washoe County from a strategic, long-term plan will actually be turning that over to all of those community services? Where Washoe County is actually the convener of the project management of it, but the actual running of it, do you, do you see it from that perspective? And I'm just wanting to get that clarification because I think it's really helpful to understand. And I realize that it may evolve over time, right? I mean, things, our plans are like a recipe, they can change based on the ingredients to which you're adding at that time. But if you, if that's been the plan since 2021, is Washoe County going to continue to stay in the business of, of providing homeless services?
So I would tell you, and first, I would say, that's your decision.
Okay.
All of your direction on, on what we choose to do and how we do this. We got into this business because government needed to support through structure. And the more communities we meet with to talk about what's happening across the nation and where things are working well and where they are not working well, is where government has stepped in alongside those nonprofits because funding is such an issue, to ensure that the data, the funding streams, the structure of how do we work together as a community to identify who is homeless, what type of housing do they need, and how do we put them appropriately into that housing in the most efficient way? When that is gone, that's where we start to lose control and see some inefficiencies start to occur.
And I think it's important to bring that up. So I'm not trying to put you in a position of, you know, looking at working with everyone to accomplish a goal. But the slide that you presented at the strategic planning meeting, that, where it has, yeah, thanks. And I realize that was in a point in time at that snapshot, but it's pretty amazing. I can't, let's see, 1440, 1440 for Nevada versus 606 for Florida. And knowing that we're using a Florida model for best practice is really encouraging, and I just wanted to point that out. In terms of population, I don't know what the ratio, but the population of Florida compared to Nevada as a whole is significant in Florida. And to see that ratio of 606, I think is extremely promising. The fact that, kudos to Washoe County and you and everyone else who helped to put the HMIS at the level and the tracking and incorporating the 90-day and not doing point in time. I'm not going to get into my own, you know, personal thing on a point in time, even for Washoe County School District. I mean, that's a, point in time is a very common practice, but looking at how you extrapolate that average and then seeing what that benefit is, but getting to whatever the percentage of population versus ratio in Florida, I think is encouraging. And I think everyone really, that, the summit, the summit that was the second annual summit that happened a while ago, I think is also an indication of how far we're moving as a whole collectively, that it's not just what you're doing, it's literally this whole concept. And it brings me to that point with the sequential intercept model as an example of, if there's a way that we are looking at, or are there any discussions to look at, at the more formal regionalization? We have the most team, we have the hope team, we have really a great jurisdictional connection with the success of, of what that's, what's happening there, right? Whether it's the law enforcement or whomever, and that whole, that whole connective model. And I just think that if that discussion could start happening, I think it would be beneficial to have a concerted effort to look at having, and I'm pausing because each jurisdiction calls it something different, but its goal is the same and, and how that works. And so I think it's something that we could think about in the future of having that discussion and what we can do with policy to, to move that forward. I think it'll help with leveraging resources. I think it'll help in terms of that concerted effort. I think the timing is right because of the SIM and because of the success of what's happening here, but there's more work to be done, right? There's all these challenges, housing, 1,100 units, and, you know, getting everybody on the same system and having everybody, you know, rowing in the same way. But I do think it's something that I think is worth having that discussion, and so I'll leave it to this body to have that future discussion. But for me, I think that's an important aspect that we should be coordinating at a more formal level, whether in our local agreement or whatever that might look like, because you're in that space. Washoe County's in that space, but so are those other jurisdictions and the touchpoints of that area. And so I think the timing is right for that, Madam Chair.
With the street teams, you're saying?
I'm saying the street, the most, the hope, all of those teams, looking at that being a regional approach. And I think the time is right for it. My last question, and I appreciate, Madam Chair, you giving me the time. My last question. You've given us a lot of information, and you are seeing the stabilization of the graphs that you showed in terms of the number of people, at least hot-off-the-press numbers. Can you give a percentage even without a, a number, or if you do know a number of folks who actually are in permanent housing and are living independently, are moving out of the homeless, employed, and are really, I'll use the term, the success story that we all hope will never achieve 100%? It's like Adam Smith's point when he wrote, you know, the famous economics of the wealth of nations. Unemployment's always going to be 3%. You're never really going to get to zero. Same thing with homeless, you're never going to get to zero. But how, as you put it, we're built for zero. So how many people have we seen and what is, or the percentage of success we've seen that are truly, truly out of the homeless world of services? If that's possible?
I don't know if that is possible.
Okay.
But we are tracking, and we're going to shift. You know, that, a lot of this has also been this growth of, when we first started sharing this data, the number was going up, and we would celebrate every time the number was increasing because that meant we had more data in the system, not necessarily that our count was going up. So now, you know, all being under one roof at, at HSA, we've got everyone organized, everything's in HMIS, you know, for the most part. And so now we can start to look at trends. We're just barely to that point where we have a good understanding of how many people in our community are actually homeless. And so we are going to start continuing to, should, sorry, we're going to start pushing the information about the housing data. This is a real number, this is the housing stats, this is how many housing placements into permanent housing are coming out of the work that the county is funding every single month. That recidivism is related specifically to these three programs, like all, everything at CARES, everything at Our Place, and, and our Sheriff's Office, Hope Team. And we're floating somewhere between 18 and 24% recidivism in there. Those are specifically, we look at, when you're permanently housed, after six months, are you still housed? That's what this number is. So for everybody who was housed between July 1st and December 31st, 2023, on July 1st, 24, were you still housed? And we're, we're just under that 23% mark floating in there right now. So we're going to continue to watch this. We're going to, you know, continue to change and adjust our programs to watch that go down. And that's really where we're learning things like the tenancy support, sending that case manager home to make sure, you know, the county and all these nonprofits spent a lot of time working to help you get all the supports in place so that you can be successfully housed for a long term. You have to refill out that paperwork next year, and who's going to help you do that if we're not there? So we're, we're playing with that, we're seeing a lot of success with that, and that's where we're trying to figure out how we can spread ourselves out and make sure that we maintain as much progress as we can make.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would say, on this slide, your goal, I think, was 50 a month, right? And you were, you were only hitting 30 a month just until, like, pretty recently. And then looking at this, this is, you've doubled where we were.
The goal was for CARES campus. And so CARES campus is still floating about 30 to 35 a month.
Okay, this is all the programs. Got it, got it. Thank you.
And, and really, the housing is, is the barrier.
We don't have the housing. Yeah. But there's people ready to go.
There's people ready to go.
Yeah.
Which is good.
That is good. Okay, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for your report. Others, other commissioners have mentioned that we could probably, if we really drilled into this, probably spend 30 or 45 minutes per page with questions. So I'm going to cut right to the, the chase. For me, it's always been about, a lot of it for me is housing folks that are not from here, and, and looking at its new, new enrollments. We're looking at California at 45% of the new enrollments, other parts of Nevada at 20%, right away, we're at 65%. And when you add in Washington, Arizona, we're looking at 74% of the new folks coming to the, the system are coming from other places. So that needs to be looked at. That's a, that's a huge concern. On one, one side, you're trying to get people housed and sheltered, and we have a housing shortage. Well, maybe we have a housing shortage because of other segments of those states who come here with funds. So just, just like to highlight that. Next, as far as how difficult it is to ask, ask people where they're from and that type of thing, I, you don't go anywhere. You don't go to church, you don't go to, you'd never meet anybody within a minute or two that, how, well, how do you like Northern Nevada? How do you like Reno? The next question is, and where did you come from? Or, or the next, the second question could be, how long have you been here? And the third question is, where'd you come from? That doesn't seem like that's difficult of a detective work to ask those first three questions. Do you like it here? How long have you been here? Where did you come from? How long does it take to say that? Didn't we have a stopwatch? I mean, we probably got that down in a minute or so. Obviously, they're going to give a response, but it's easy enough to ask those type of questions. So you said you, you said some letters that you'd sent out. Could I get a copy of the sample letters that you sent out to other Nevada counties? And also who, what you're sending to the state of California? Right now, the bus tickets don't sound like such a bad idea, do they? I mean, it sounds like other people are using the bus tickets to send them somewhere else. This is kind of like a, a moving target. And, and the next point I want to make is, when you ask people, did you become broke or destitute or insolvent when you got here? Most people are not going to say, yeah, I lived in Beverly Hills, but as soon as I moved to Nevada, I had nothing. So they probably, there's a great likelihood that they probably didn't have much where, where they came from. Probably, this is a step up. Think about that. If your step up is moving to the CARES campus, what the heck was your life like before that? So I think it's very unlikely that somebody automatically became homeless just the minute they got into the city limits or the county limit. So these are some, some just guesses on my part, but I think it's very unlikely that somebody was well off before they got here. So they probably moved over here to get better than what they thought they were getting at home. And Florida, to, to my fellow commissioners' point, if Florida's doing such a better job, maybe we should hire Florida to run our CARES campus or our, our programs. Or maybe we should be looking at privatizing this and let somebody else handle this. And we send them a big fat check every month or year, whenever we do that, and let somebody else run it. They deal with the employees, they deal with the PERS, which there won't be PERS if private sectors are doing this. And then we get a lot of budgetary miles for our, our bang for our buck if we let privatization, privatization take over a lot of these services. And there's, there's lots of ways, there's other ways to, to fix this and to improve on this. And good, better, best, never let it rest until good is better and better is best. There's better ways to do what we're doing, I think, but that's just my opinion. Thank you for your report.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Garcia.
Just to, as we're talking about the new enrollments, you know, we're talking about the percentages, which do sound high when you, when you frame it that way, but it's 97 clients from California in the last eight months, 28 clients from Las Vegas in the last eight months, and nine from Carson City. And I think it's important for us to remember that if our partners are doing well, the whole system is doing well. So can you, I know you're here to talk about the great work we're doing in Washoe County, but 30 seconds on, on what's happening in Las Vegas and what's happening in Carson City, just so that we can have a more holistic approach, what's happening in the state?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not prepared to stop, to talk about all of that, but I, you know, recently, Carson has had several conversations with us and several of our nonprofits also, and has picked up work with Karma Box and others because they know that they, they need to have resources. One, thank you for the clarification. 14% on average of people who are entering homelessness are coming from outside of the area. And of that 14%, this is the breakdown that we have. It, it is different. I mean, that, in the, in the past, it was easy to say, go to somebody else's border, go, go to Reno, go to the other shelter. The closest facility is here. And with so much money being invested in these programs and services, there's now a call out for that. And so for that, for clarification, we are not sending a letter. It's a personal phone call. It's a, I know you need help. That's why the person in front of us is not being penalized when they show up. They're being helped, and we call, we call the staff. What, what are you up against? What is the situation? Why do you not have resources? How can we help? And, and sometimes that's, you know, our board needs to hear why this is so important because the staff are doing everything that they can. And so then those conversations get elevated also. Sometimes it's just, oh gee, well, I didn't even think of that. No problem. We'll, we'll use the funding that we have to, to come up with a different solution. So it, it is evolving, and this is all fairly new as far as, I, again, what people are doing with larger shelters and versus no shelters and putting people into housing directly, into motel rooms or the converted motel room. So it's, it's all transforming pretty quickly, and we're doing our best to be a good partner and to, to share our needs so that we can hear their needs too and see where we can meet on some common ground.
And to that point, and I'm so glad that Commissioner Andrea Ella is going to bring this to NACO, because we have had discussions with NACO and the League of Cities about this issue, just in Nevada, to call it out, to, you know, have a dialogue. And I think that it's really great that you're collecting this. So next legislative session, if this data holds true and we're still serving folks from around the state and specifically Las Vegas and Carson City, I think we need to have a discussion with the governor about the, this is a Nevada problem. We need to look to our local jurisdictions. If they don't have resources, then you need to be giving us resources. There needs to be some sort of equity as part of this discussion. And I appreciate that we're not turning people away. These are people who need help. They are, have nowhere to go. And I think that we, you know, as far as like, just case study, I have spoken to people whose lives have changed from the CARES campus, who were not able to get on their feet until there was a place for them to, to have a, a there was a place for them to, to have a, a bed, have a place to clean their clothes and themselves. And, um, there are, there are many success stories in these numbers of, you know, we just are looking at numbers, but we are changing lives. And I think that the incredible expertise that your staff have, that these are professional caseworkers that, um, are interested in this type of work, but they want to work for the government because they want a PERS job, they want a retirement, and they deserve that. These are professional caseworkers. And so, for me, I think that the board, as well as the region, as well as the state, I'm glad the state is finally getting into supporting us with tenancy support and wraparound services for permanent supportive housing. They should definitely do that and continue and help us even more with that because if we can build the, the programs. But, um, I, you know, I think that we need to recognize that the staff that we have are delivering on this every day, and this is a really tough job, um, to show up. And as you are always reminding me, we need to recognize people who want to work in these spaces because this is tough work, and we need them to work in these spaces. So, I commend you and the team, um, for just showing up every day and working so hard. And I'm really glad that you're part of Washoe County, and I want to continue to support that. Any other board comments or questions? Not seeing any. Vice Chair Herman, were you signing in? No, okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Yersey. Have a great day. All right, we are now moving into our consent items. Do any commissioners want to pull, um, consent or have questions on consent? I'm not seeing that anyone does. So, I am looking, uh, to Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on consent?
Eileen Eklund? Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eileen Eklund. I live in Sparks, and I'll be brief. I'm here today to ask you to reappoint Tammy Ruff to the Washoe County Library Board of Trustees. Over the last few years, our excellent public libraries have endured a great deal of disruption and turmoil. With the defeat of WC1, their future funding is unclear. Now, following the resignation of the, the library director, the trustees are set to launch a search for a new director. In the midst of all this instability, the libraries need strong and stable leadership. This should be our highest priority for the library system going forward. Reappointing Tammy Ruff is an important first step toward this goal. She's served on the board for more than a year now and understands the challenges the libraries face. A former librarian, she currently, she is currently the only trustee who has such on-the-ground experience and knowledge of how libraries operate. I believe trustee Ruff will provide a steady hand in helping to guide the libraries as they navigate the difficult economic times ahead. I also trust and believe that she'll continue to support the library's commitment to inclusivity and to maintaining our community's access to a wide variety of books and experiences. Our libraries provide an incredible wealth of information and activities. They are places for everyone to come together and build community, particularly in challenging times. I thank you for your ongoing support for this essential community resource and for taking the time to hear my concerns.
Thank you.
We have nobody else signed in.
Okay, thank you very much. It looks like Commissioner Clark has left, uh, but, um, I am looking for a motion on consent. And Commissioner Andrell, thank you, looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on that motion on consent? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes. It's not five to zero, it would be four to zero. Commissioner Clark conveniently left for this vote. So, uh, we will now move into item seven, or actually, our block vote. Vice Chair Herman, do you have a block vote for us today? Wonderful.
I'll turn my mic on.
Perfect.
So, the block vote is, and this is in the form of a motion, seven, eight, nine, and 11. I'm removing 15, as we discussed earlier.
I agree. Yes, thank you so much. So, that's a motion. I'm looking for a second on block. Commissioner Andrell, thank you so much. And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on that block?
We have Penny Brock signed in for item 11.
Penny Brock, for the record. It looks like this is a lot of funding for the CARES Campus. And this is very confusing. Number one says there's a grant, um, of some sort from the state, over $5 million, and then another one for over $3 million, which is an in-kind match. So, does that mean we taxpayers in Washoe County have to match the $9 million? Uh, next, um, is going down to number three, is to amend the contract for the Volunteers of America. So, I don't know what the original contract of Volunteers of America, it's hard to get that information. And of course, public records requests are almost invert, impossible to get a response to these days. So, it looks like, um, if you add in the three, well, I don't know that, $3 million, that might be an in-kind that we as taxpayers in Washoe have to pay for number one. But if you add up everything else, this looks like it's a total of 12 and a half million dollars. Now, I'd like to know, is this over and above the $44 million already in the budget for fiscal year 25 through 26? Taxpayers would like to know, um, where this 12 and a half million dollars is coming from, out of what pot or bucket? I don't understand why the Volunteers of America, number three, are getting such, um, a huge increase. It looks like permanent supportive housing building, um, but still, why is that, uh, towards the bottom, it says the total not to exceed over 7 and a half million dollars? So, there's just a lot of questions that we as taxpayers have about this funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have nobody else signed in.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on our block, seven, eight, nine, and 11. Any other questions or comments from the board on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Can we confirm who the secondor was on that?
Uh, Commissioner Andrell.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's going to be on our screen here. There it is.
Commissioner Clark? Thank you.
And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, um, I would like to take a, uh, 10-minute break so the board can use the restroom if they would like to, and we'll come back at, um, 11:50, and we'll continue with item 10 when we come back. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. I'll bring this board accounting commissioners meeting back to order, and we will now move into item 10. Mr. Solero.
Item number 10 is a discussion and possible action to approve a plan to recruit and select a Washoe County manager, including authorizing the Department of Human Resources to contract with an executive search firm to conduct the recruitment. Additionally, it's to appoint an assistant county manager, Kate Thomas, as interim county manager during the period. And Ms. Julie Pahulk is here from Human Resources.
Welcome. Thanks so much.
Good morning. Thank you, Julie Pahulke for the record, Human Resources. I'm here to talk about the discussion of the recruitment process and timeline for the county manager and also the appointment of an interim county manager. But I'm going to get started with the PowerPoint on the timeline. The tentative recruitment timeline starts today and goes through October 27th with an appointment date on October 27th, 2025 at a special meeting. The anticipated start date of the new county manager will be January 5th, 2026. It could be earlier based on how much notice the person gives and where they're coming from if they have to relocate. So we're using the date, January 5th. So, starting today, Human Resources is prepared to send out requests for proposals for the recruitment from executive search firms. And this would be contingent upon the board approving the recruitment process. So, we would ask for the proposals to be submitted from today through July 8th, which is a best practice. They usually like three weeks to put everything together to get it to us. And we would also include our tentative timelines so they know what our expectations are. Once those are received, HR in consultation with the board chair and the board vice chair will review the proposals and determine which executive search firms we would like to interview. The week of the 14th through the 18th, we will schedule interviews with those executive firms. And if this sounds familiar, this is very similar to the process we used for the fire chief for the Truckee Meadows Fire Chief Recruitment. Once a search firm is selected in conjunction with the board chair, the vice chair, we will work with the firm to identify the information that we want to use in the recruitment process and in the outreach plan. This will be contingent upon the executive search firm's schedule, which is why we want to share this information with them so they have time to put all that together. We're looking at a recruitment in the month of August, from August 4th to August 29th. Again, that would be contingent upon the executive searcher's schedule. Once the recruitment closes, they will review the applications and identify the top candidates. Some of them have questionnaires, some of them do interviews, they do different things, and we'll find that process out during the vetting process of the recruiters. September 15th through the 18th, the board chair, the vice chair, and HR, we will meet with them to go over their top candidates as they share those with us, and we will review them and determine the group to move forward. September 18th through October 3rd, the executive search firm will conduct backgrounds on the top candidates. This is different than what we've done in the past. Typically, we've gone through the process and then we've done the background, so we have to wait upon the background. So, we switch that. We're going to do the background process first, and then if anybody falls out of the background process, we know sooner rather than later. October 23rd through the 25th, we will conduct meet and greets with the top candidates and the stakeholders. Again, this is similar to what we did with Truckee Meadows Fire when they had a meet and greet. We'd like to have three of those because we anticipate there'll be many stakeholders, and the locations to be identified by the board. And then on October 27th, have a special session with the top candidates for the Washoe County manager. Do you have any questions?
On the recruitment, are there any questions from the board? I'm not seeing that there are right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to move on to the second part of the item that talks about the appointment of an interim county manager. And the board item talks about appointing Kate Thomas from July 1st through the date that the new county manager begins at an increased rate of 10%.
Great.
Do you have any questions about that?
Do you have anything else? I'm sorry.
Oh, well, it talks about her base rate. And when someone serves in an acting capacity and they do the full job, they're entitled to a 10% increase. So, she'll still get the PERS increase. Actually, she'll get the COLA in July, and then the PERS decrease in July as well. And she would stay in that position until the new county manager was appointed.
Great. And is this the point for questions?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. And I think there has been a little bit of confusion about the amount that is in the staff report, and I just wanted to clear that up if you would help me. The pay is based off the assistant county manager's pay as approved by the board a few years ago when we looked at pay, but it is not even close to what Manager Brown was making as the county manager. So, I just don't, could you clarify that for the record? Because I think there were some questions from folks, confusion.
I'll go ahead and take that one.
Thank you.
Patricia Hurley, HR Director. That is correct. The ACM and the county manager is about 12.4% apart. Giving the acting pay, again, the 10% is not PERS compensable. It would still keep a gap of about 2.4%.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that's 16,000. That's reference. That's the approximate amount should she, when she begins July 1st until January 5th. So, not knowing when they'll start, that could be more, that could be less.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on that. And I'd like to just tell the board a little bit of the work that has gone into this. We have such amazing assistant county managers at the county, and my first inclination was, let's rotate because they're so amazing and they can pull the team together together. But it's not a best practice, is what I found out from both the DA's office, who pushed a little bit back on that, as well as the HR office. The staff really need one person to come to. And so, when looking at this and talking to Manager Brown, there is, I think, some opportunities for, while we are looking at our county manager study that will be coming to the board next, I think it's next week, is it next week, and on Wednesday. And there are some recommendations coming out of that that we're hoping Mr. Solero would take over special projects. And so, I think that that is an effort to see, you know, how we can move that process forward, and then also have Ms. Thomas as the point person over the next six months. And I think we're in good hands. I really appreciate the work that you put into the recruitment, but I would love to hear from the board on anything that they'd like to see that's changed or questions that they may have on either one of these pieces. So, Vice Chair Herman? Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Garcia? Thank you. Commissioner Andriola and Commissioner Clark?
I have some questions. Thank you for asking. Will we get an opportunity to ask this candidate a couple of questions before we vote on this?
How does that work, DA Large?
It's, yeah, Madam Chair, I'm not, this isn't labeled a recruitment process in terms of answering questions. Obviously, the board has some discretion into to ask Ms. Thomas questions on this appointment.
Okay. Well, if Ms. Thomas feels comfortable, then we'll have you come down. Thank you so much. And Mr. Clark, or Commissioner Clark, what are your questions?
Oh, we, till she gets settled here. And thank you for taking these questions. And they're meant as legitimate questions, so take it that way. I'm interested in the future. How do you see the county's role? And I guess one of the big concerns I have with the county, existing county management, is lack of sharing public records. I think, and I think the public thinks, that all public records should be that, except for maybe some HR issues. What is your position on dealing with public records in a timely fashion, other than just saying, "We've received your request and we'll get back to you next October"? I mean, that's happened to the sitting chief judge. And I know I have to ask for public records. So, I'm looking for an interim county manager and hopefully a new county manager that is receptive of this. The target goes away if we answer questions. Nobody can say you're playing games and you're playing whack-a-mole and you're not sharing information. So, in your position, tell us what your position would be going forward from this day on public records requests.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. For the record, Kate Thomas. My role is interim, should the board move in that direction, is to hold the reins and work with the board and the county staff to decide how we go as an organization. Working with the board to decide what it is that you'd like to see changed with the public records process is absolutely something that we can sit down and discuss. I agree with you. I think there is a level of public transparency that the organization and any tax-funded organization owes the public. So, I would love the opportunity to sit down with you in the interim to talk about how we could shape things going forward for the interim period, and then to tee it up for a future county manager to come in and take the reins, permanently pushing the county in a forward direction. So, happy to discuss that. It's a board, you know, it's the board policy that we would follow. It's certainly not the manager's discretion to set that policy. So, I look forward to that opportunity.
And thank you for that answer. And I know it's not the manager's job solely, but it has the appearance here, at least to me, a sitting county commissioner, that others in a management position here have found it to their best interests not to share public records in a timely fashion. So, anything that you could do as the manager to help move this process along, I would appreciate. And I think the public would, and I think that would restore a lot of confidence in the public. Anything that we do should be, and we always talk about transparency, let's walk the walk if we're going to talk the talk. This is what I'm suggesting. Next comment. It's been almost impossible for me as a sitting county commissioner to get things on the agenda. I'll give you an example. I wanted to have somebody come forward from the city of Reno who's paid for horse fencing along county boundaries. When I heard about, heard this talk at my cab meeting, that's, excuse me, pardon me. One of the first times I'd really heard about that. I think it's important that all county residents should have an understanding of what's taking place in, on the county perimeters of our, the county property. If there's a fence being built along the county lines or anywhere in the county area, I think that thing, that should be talked about here, at least a presentation. So, it's on the record here at the county, with what the city of Reno is doing. So, there's an example of something, I don't think it's the least bit harmful to share information, but that request to have it on the agenda was denied. Would you help get things like that on the agenda if asked?
Thank you. Yeah. One of the things that's highlighted in the report that the commission request was a consistent process that's open, transparent, and inclusive with the board and the staff to get items on the agenda. So, we all look forward as your team putting items forward in a way that makes sense for the board, following along some of the recommendations that the Raftellus report, which you're correct, that'll be next week, outlines. I think there's some room for improvement in that area.
I think, yeah, just my opinion, I think there's a lot of room for improvement in that, that area. And people need to understand that putting it on the agenda doesn't mean I expect it to be approved. Putting it on the agenda means it's open for discussion, and we can understand what my fellow commissioners' thought processes are. I don't expect anybody to vote with me. It's just not, not life. But I expect some robust discussion about certain things, and I want the people to understand who's for something and who's against it. This is not putting something on the agenda when it's requested, to me, is the absolute 180 degrees off from transparency. Let's get something on the agenda. Again, a simple request. I had people that at the cab meeting last week, at my cab meeting, and I suggested that we have quarterly evening meetings so people who work during the day can come in and express their opinions. We can't even get that on the agenda. It's a simple yes or no. It'll either carry or it won't. It's a simple request. And those are the simple example of why I'm very unhappy with the situation here. A simple request, I watch it, I've watched it my whole life. You can listen to it on NPR all over the country, Santa Monica, LA. All these other cities have, sometimes they have evening meetings, so folks that are working can come in and at least share their opinion instead of taking a full day off to talk about something. So, that's a simple request. I don't know why it's continued to be denied. Maybe it won't pass. Maybe everybody says thumbs down. I get it. But let's at least have that discussion so the public understands some of us want to hear what they have to say. So, thank you. If you have any comments about that.
Certainly.
Any other comments about getting things on the agenda?
No, I look forward to a collaborative discussion on how we can improve that process for you and the entire board.
Very good. Thank you for your answers to the questions. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions for Ms. Thomas? I'm not seeing that anyone does. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming up. Anything else from the board on this item? I'm not seeing anyone. All right. We have public comment. Madam Clerk?
Penny Brock, followed by Roblin Williams. And Ms. Brock has items, has papers to distribute.
Penny Brock for the record. So, I read about this interim appointment that you're considering making. I was excited that Chair Hill had the idea that, why couldn't the assistant county managers share the responsibility? They could rotate the chair at the commission meeting, so on and so forth. So, since the decision's been made to appoint an interim, I've got concerns about the person you're considering. I gave you a copy of the case, the lawsuit, when this person worked at the city council. And it was shocking to read what came out. My concern is that citizens like myself, the county employees, and public officials like yourself, we will not feel safe. This person has a history, an established history, of criticizing and making light of others, and her involvement in lawsuits with employees and elected officials. She does not have the experience or knowledge needed for a county manager of 3,300 employees, nor the budget experience to handle a budget of one, over $1 billion. Since she's come to Washoe County- which Ms. Thomas was involved in. Recently, it's come to light about SOBRA 24, which is undergoing an FBI investigation. So possibly, they're investigating her for that. Then we've got the Kari Ann Burgess lawsuit over what happened at the elections, during the elections. So, much, there's much concern about what happened with that. Now, I can't find my notes that I highlighted that. But anyway, I would ask you to reconsider this nominee for the reasons I've mentioned. Probably of greatest concern is the handling of the budget over $1 billion. Thank you.
Roblin Williams?
For the record, my name is Roblin Williams, a concerned citizen. I am opposed to hiring Kate Thomas as an interim on two points, both hiring her, and if you do choose to hire her, I am opposed to any pay raise at a time we are broke, unless it's a raise for government officials. Mostly, I am opposed of her being appointed interim because she was acting in an interim position during the 2024 election, of which I observed almost every day, watched, videotaped, took pictures of, and spoke directly with her when we found one of the live, active ballot scanners had disappeared from the floor of the ballot counting room in the middle of live counting of mail-in ballots, and a machine that has Wi-Fi capability. When we filed to ask both she and Andrew the question of where did the scanner number 13 go, they ignored us the entire day. So, we just waited till it was lights-out time, and she and Andrew walked out of the inner RVO offices. And we asked, "Where was that scanner?" And that is when she told us that she had made a decision to move the scanner to a warehouse on Rock Boulevard secretly, under no mandatory observation, without any camera viewing it, in an unsecured area of a public warehouse area on Rock Boulevard. My observation of our elections, which is going to be one part of her job, is that we have a failure of our elections in regards to making citizens feel comfortable and confident that who we are, the people's vote, is who's coming into elections. We have questions that have still been unanswered, concerns with the Secretary of State. The two, what you've already done is hired Andrew full-time, who was part of a failure of our 2024 vote. And you're going to probably do the same thing with her, that will lead to a continuation of a division of your constituents between who feels confident that our votes are real or not. But the good thing is, the FBI are probably going to come and give us a forensic audit, and I welcome that audit. So, we'll look forward to hearing what really has happened since 2020.
We have no one else signed in.
Thank you very much. Any other Commission comments or questions? I'm not see, oh, Vice Chair Herman.
Some of our public speakers are pretty brave to come forward and, you know, try to help us to make the right decisions. Can we, I would suggest that we table this item until we've had a chance to really look into it. And maybe, possibly, find that maybe in order to keep the respect of the citizens of Washoe County, that maybe we could choose somebody a little different, give someone new a chance. It is worrisome. I mean, these things have been brought up, brought before us many times. And it really bothers me because it puts a kind of a suspicious feeling into the people that are waiting for us to do the right thing. So, just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Board comments? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't even know where to start, but I'll start right here. I've got a long history with this candidate. Based on her answers today, and people are worried about the budget, people are worried about lawsuits, people are worried about other things. I think based on her answers here today, if those turn out to be true, that the transparency has increased in this county, and public records are increased, availability, and timeliness, and agenda items, you know, I'm willing to say that was then, and this is now, and move forward with this. I know I might get some criticism from some folks, but I was just talking about possible cost savings and other things. So, I'm, I'm kind of leaning that this might, might be okay if, if somebody's on the record, and we can hold our feet to the fire and make sure that these things that she's agreed to happen, I might be willing to support this. So, just throwing that out. I'm a 180 from where I started here today. I was, I was going to recuse myself and walk away, but asking those questions and getting the answers, if those turn out to be true, then I think that just the interim time that we might have to deal with this might be workable. So, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. And I really appreciate that open-mindedness. I will tell you, Ms. Thomas has an incredible career in government in the state of Nevada, has served in the Secretary of State's office, worked at the city of Reno, managed their budget, which was close to $1 billion, and has been a committed public servant at Washoe County. And so, I get upset when I hear these accusations about a candidate who I think is overly qualified for this position, is going to do a great job. And I think I really appreciate your openness. And Commissioner Andriola?
I just wanted to-
I wasn't finished.
I'm so sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. So, part of what I'm asking for, you could be a big part in helping with agenda items and, and making sure that we have public records accessibility. We have a different county manager. We have a different person representing the DA's office. I think that the spirit of this county should be, if people want public records, give it to them. And don't impede that at all. There's, there's reasons why they're called public records by name. By definition, they're public records. Public records need to be examined by the public when, when they want to, not sometime in the future. So, I think that there's been an impediment for the last four or five years, starting with my predecessor. I know when I, I've got 10, you know, 10 or 11, almost 11 years with the county at this point in time. When I was off with the assessor, we answered our own public records requests. We didn't need 3-1-1. We didn't need attorneys. We didn't need any of that baloney. Somebody asks a question, we answer it. I think all department heads should answer their public records requests. And this centralized clearinghouse has the appearance of trying to hide, hide things and cover things up and redact things, you know, unless it's something that major, all records should be public records, and they should be released to the public when requested. You've heard me say that just about every meeting since I've been here, public records. I like to get things on the record. People have a right to see that. These taxpayers fund everything you see here. My wages, the building, the maintenance of the building, all the staff, everybody gets, gets paid by the public. And if the public wants to see the public records, they should see that. So, I'm going to take to heart what the candidate said, and if she's going to help do that, and maybe through the chair as well, and through the DA's office, I'm going to reach out to Mr. Hicks as well, and make sure, let's streamline this stuff instead of constricting it. It just takes the target away. It takes the whole conspiracy thing away. It takes the whole distrust of government away. If things are handled, questions are answered as they're asked, not when you feel like telling us. By the time some of these public records get out, who cares? Somebody else already knows about it. But public records, it's disrespectful not to share with the public when the public asks for public records. So, I'm going to ask the Chair, and again, the candidate, to, to help, help this along. And if that's the case, then I'll support what's taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you. I really appreciate the fact that we are going to have, I'll use a guided map to what the Raftellus report is going to lead to. And we'll be seeing that, and everyone, in terms of transparency, will be able to see that. I think the commitment by A. Sam Solero to look at how to execute that is the balance of the workload. People do need to sleep and take care of their own well-being in order to be effective. And I have really been so encouraged in terms of optimism of seeing Ms. Thomas and Mr. Solero, and even, you know, Patricia Hurley and staff, looking at embracing what Raftellus is calling a reset. And I think this is a great opportunity to look at that. So, when the new county manager, whoever he or she is, will then have that, that train being put on the tracks as it's moving down, and then the leadership with the new county manager taking that where he or she feels and needs to be in terms of transparency and being effective, and, and looking at working with everyone collectively as a whole. I also want to just share, I mean, there's nothing, this is just a short period of time. There's no elections that are happening. There's no changes. Anything like that would still have to come through the Board as a whole. I really see this as, again, using the Raftellus as a guideline, getting the business done of the county, and looking at this as an opportunity to put us into a trajectory that is going to be a benefit to our whole community. So, I, I am going to support Ms. Thomas's interim with capital letters. This isn't a selection of the county manager. And I do appreciate Patricia Hurley and, and everyone in terms of the staff of putting a recruitment process together. I think the recruitment process worked well with the, the recent hiring of the TM Fire Chief. And I think giving all the commissioners an opportunity to have a voice in that was welcome during that process. And I think is even going to be, you know, opened up even at a bigger level with this. So, the community as a whole, the stakeholder meetings that you've outlined, the commissioners working together. So, I really want to commend Ms. Thomas for the hard work that not only you've been doing, as you've been designated many times, but the relationship, professional relationship that you have with Mr. Solero, to really keep communication being the top level of importance, because I believe that was lacking. And I see a huge opportunity for us to be the best we can be. So, I'm going to support this, this interim selection that won't have any impact on some of the concerns that many have brought up, especially involved in the election. So, thank you for everyone's hard work, and I look forward to the recruitment process and what that might lead to. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take a moment to thank Manager Brown for his service. Thank Ms. Thomas and Mr. Solero for all their great collaboration and teamwork. And you've led the way for a long time now, and I have full confidence that it's going to be a great interim period for you. So, thank you for stepping up into this very difficult role. And with that, Madam Chair, I move to approve, to recruit and select a Washoe County manager, and to appoint Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas as the interim county manager for the period of July 1, 2025, until the interim county manager vacates the position or a permanent county manager is appointed.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. And thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And Commissioner Clark, we'll open it up to comments after we've taken the motion in a second. Go ahead. You got it.
Okay. The question I have is probably more for HR, and since we're talking about county manager, I'd like to find out exactly what the, there's been discussion and write-up about time and service and for existing manager Brown. I'd like to find out what the exact payout might be, what the, what the financial numbers are, if there's any cost savings by the manager leaving early, or if it's still going to cost us. So, I'd like to get that on the record as well. When we're talking about pay increase for one employee, I'm wondering if we're saving any money by the other employee. I'd like to see that report when, when possible. So, just like to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and thank you for the motion in the second. And I will take the vote in just a second. But I did forget to mention, one of the lessons I learned as far as the chief recruitment is, I want to get your questions, questions that you want to be asked of the candidate, to HR or me, either one, beforehand, because I feel like there, I could have done a better job of being a liaison to the commission on those questions. So, as you come up with questions, send them our way. I want to make sure everyone gets those questions that they want during the recruitment. And then, if there are particular things that you are looking for in the manager, are you looking for some sort of specific experience that you think that you really want to make sure is put out in that recruitment brochure? And so, you don't have to say that today, obviously, but if you could email me or Patricia Hurley that information, that would be great, because I want to make sure that that is included. And our ideal candidate statement is something that we all come to a consensus on. And so, if you have input on that, you can always connect with us on that. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions from the Board, seeing, we took public comment. It was so long ago. Yeah. All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on the screen. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, everyone. We are now going to move into item 12. And Mr. Solero?
Excuse me. Madam Chair, item number 12 is a recommendation to appoint one candidate to the Washoe County Open Seat on the Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment Coordinating Council for a two-year term beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2027. And Ms. Wilson is here to run you through this item.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
Alexandra Wilson, for the record. As Solaro had mentioned, you guys are considering five candidates for the one opening position for a two-year term on the Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment Coordinating Council. We do have ballots available if you guys would like to utilize them. However, since there are so few candidates, as well as only one opening, you guys are welcome to either nominate or choose one candidate, and then go to a vote. It's up to the Board to decide.
I think we still want ballots. We just, we love our ballots around here. Thank you so much. So, you want us to just choose one candidate on this round? Great. Any questions from the Board on this? I'm not seeing any, so just choose your top candidate.
Do we have public comment on this?
Oh, my gosh. Thank you so much, DA Large. I was just, you know, pushing forward. Thank you. You were, you were ahead. I'm so sorry. Yes. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes. Andrea Schuman?
Great. I'm so sorry.
It wasn't really necessary, but I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Andrea Schuman. I've been-
I'm not seeing any, so just choose your top candidate.
Do we have public comment on this?
Oh my gosh, thank you so much, DA Large. I was just, you know, pushing forward. Thank you. You were, you were ahead. I'm so sorry. Yes, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes. Andrea Schuman.
Great. I'm so sorry.
It wasn't really necessary, but I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Andrea Schuman. I've been a long-term Nevada resident and I grew up in Fallon, Churchill County, so, and I also was a probation officer for that area as well as Lyon County. And I live in Sparks with my family. I do have kids and even grandkids. But I did want to just introduce myself, let you know that being a probation officer, I had a lot of different hats I had to wear and I believe a lot of it would be beneficial in this position just because I worked a lot with treatment centers and incarcerated juveniles. So we had to find the resources or we had to really work to get them in. Unfortunately, yes, we did have to use Washoe County.
Yes.
But it was also, we tried to do everything ourselves. But I do understand the need for resources and to listen and to search to whomever can help. So I wanted to share that with you today and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much and thanks for waiting through this long meeting.
Absolutely.
We have no one else signed in.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. And cast your ballot when you're ready, folks.
Sorry. Thank you.
Commissioner Herman voted for Brian Urbis. Commissioner Garcia voted for Andrea Schuman. Chair Hill voted for Andrea Schuman. Commissioner Andriola voted for Andrea Schuman and Commissioner Clark voted for Andrea Schuman.
Great. All right. Congratulations. Let's make it official. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Andrea Schuman to be appointed.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, please say nay. And it's up on your screen. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for stepping up and can't wait to hear from you on all the good work you're going to do for us. So thank you. Thank you. All right. Now we'll move into item 13 and back to Mr. Solero.
Item number 13 is a recommendation to appoint, per Nevada revised statutes 501.260, one candidate to the public seat on the Washoe County Advisory Board to manage wildlife with a term beginning on July 1, 2025 and ending on June 30, 2028. And Ms. Wilson is here again.
Great.
Hi again, Alexandra Wilson for the record. Again, this is for the Washoe County Advisory Board to manage wildlife. This is for the single public seat. The others are all sportsman seats and so you have 15 candidates in front of you. You would choose your top two since there are 15 available.
Great. Thank you so much. But we'll choose our top two, but at the end we'll whittle it down to one. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, can you public comment?
We do. Penny Brock followed by Karen Taylor. Karen Taylor.
My name is Karen Taylor. I'm Washoe County resident since childhood. My application hopefully speaks for itself, but I do want to let you know that I have been going to the Board of Wildlife Commissioners meetings for almost 16 years now and consider myself a strong wildlife advocate. I'm not a hunter. I have been fishing in my time, but I am not a hunter. I do respect that we have a long tradition of hunting in Nevada and hunters have been a great resource, conservation resource. I also think that there needs to be some other additions to the Board with some fresh ideas. I'm very concerned about population problems with wildlife in Nevada, not only mule deer, but some of the other wildlife species that we have. I have some ideas that I would like to present to, if I am selected, to the cab and I would appreciate your consideration for this very important position for our culture and our heritage in Nevada. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse Huntsman.
Thanks for letting me introduce myself. I wanted to say, I like your comment, Commissioner Clark, about allowing for alternate times. I'm one of the people that had to take today off to be here. You know, I'm a working guy, so. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm one of the candidates for the Advisory Board for Wildlife and my wife and I are lifelong residents and I just wanted to introduce myself and say hi and say I really feel like I could help out and be sort of a, you know, finger on the pulse of what the actual sportsmen are wanting and, you know, I have a lot of networks out there in the community. I do a lot of volunteer stuff and I'm already very active. So anything that I could do to help, you know, whether it's a spot on the Board or anything, I would just love to be a part of it and be able to, you know, help. So that's it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
We have nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. You'll choose your top two on the ballot.
Thank you. Hannah, my dear. Oh, thank you.
For round one, Vice Chair Herman voted for Rob Pierce and Karen Taylor. Commissioner Garcia voted for Jesse Huntsman and Karen Taylor. Chair Hill voted for Jesse Huntsman and Karen Taylor. Commissioner Andriola voted for Kaylee Hardy and Shay Slitter. And Commissioner Clark voted for Jesse Huntsman and Karen Taylor.
Okay. We have four votes for Karen Taylor and three for Mr. Huntsman and so unless the folks want to go again, I'm looking for a motion on Karen Taylor.
Madam Chair, I move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, and I will second it. Any questions on that motion from the Board? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Congratulations and thank you for folks who applied to these positions and we'll keep you posted about future opportunities because we want you to get involved. So thank you. All right. We will now move into item 14 and I will have the clerk help us with this item, please.
Okay. This will be bill number 1931, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 45, Public Welfare, by repealing Section 45.430, which contains provisions pertaining to adult day health services slash daybreak programs, making minor modifications to reflect gender neutral and/or permissive language, job title and selection process, and updating language regarding program funding, management, and availability.
Thank you very much. And does the Board need a presentation on this? I'm not seeing that anyone does, okay? This is a first reading, so is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There is not.
Okay. With that, I'm looking for someone to read it into the record.
Madam Chair, I move to introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 1931, which is an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 45, and if supported, set a public hearing for a second reading, possible adoption of the ordinance on July 8, 2025.
Thank you so much. All right. We will see this coming back to us in July then. We'll now move into item 15. Mr. Solero.
All right. Good afternoon. Item number 15 is a recommendation to approve a contractor agreement between Washoe County and Royal Ambulance, Inc., a California corporation authorized to do business in the state of Nevada to provide emergency medical services for a two-and-a-half-year term to the Gerlach area of Washoe County effective July 1, 2025 and ending December 31, 2027 at an annual cost of $630,000. And I am your staff person on this.
Yay. Okay. You heard some of the comments from earlier and I know we're going to try to get that public commenter back, but could you help us address some of those issues?
I certainly hope so.
Okay.
So as the Board is aware, or maybe the Board is not aware, the public certainly, I'm sure, is not, providing service for fire and EMS in Gerlach to a small community is very difficult for Washoe County. We have tried various different ways to do this over the years. We used to have a robust volunteer fire department in the area that provided the service and it was absolutely fantastic. What you can imagine is the community has shrunken over time. I mean, the Empire Mine has just recently reopened, so there's, you know, the community is just smaller and the community needs have changed over the years. While we have a great group of volunteers that are trying to do the best they can to provide services up there, it's really difficult to get a group, you know, of strong volunteers out of a community of about 140 people. Very, very difficult. And so Washoe County over the years has contracted with volunteers. We've contracted with Truckee Meadows Fire. We have stood up our own fire department and hired people to assist the volunteers. We have done lots of different things. Most recently, we entered into an interlocal agreement with the Pyramid Lake Pai tribe to provide fire and EMS service in Gerlach. February 28 or so, we received a letter from the Pyramid Lake Pai tribe stating that they were no longer able to provide the service for Gerlach. They need to focus more on the tribal boundaries and totally understand how that goes. And so I started the process of trying to figure out how we are going to provide any services to Gerlach, knowing that we, you know, are working with the volunteers. There just aren't a lot of providers. Sat down, had conversations with Truckee Meadows Fire, had conversations with REMZA. Burning Man actually brought Royal Ambulance forward as they provide services on the Playa during that festival. I've spoken with Truckee Meadows Community College and their program, you know, trying to work through a way to do this. We worked with the volunteers, trying to figure out if there's a way to get, again, some hired personnel up there to assist through the process. One of the other sides of the coin is the amount of money budgeted to do this work. There's about $652,000 in the upcoming fiscal year budget. As you can imagine, working with fire personnel and fire pers, that really became pretty daunting when we were working with the volunteers, just to hire three people. You know, it started to push the cost of this up towards $750,000 and that still included needing assistance from others to do some work. So working since February, trying to get a solution, knowing tight timeframes and deadlines and all of these other sorts of things, we landed on a request to enter into a contract with Royal Ambulance. Now Royal Ambulance has, you know, given us a proposal a couple of different ways. One is to provide 24-hour a day, seven-day a week, 365-day a year paramedic and EMT up there in the community. Couldn't quite afford that one. So we said, hey, is there a different way to do this? And we kind of landed on a potential for 24-hour a day, seven-day a week, 365-day a year paramedic service. However, three months out of the year, the EMT would not be available. That got us kind of within the budget that we were looking at. Now, I know Royal has been trying to work with the state of Nevada to figure out, you know, licensing and what does that really look like? There's a, you know, a good chance that I may have to come back before this Board to see if there's some contingency money to get an EMT for another three months. I don't know yet, but we need to get something moving and so this is what we're trying to accomplish, right? Trying to get a contract in place and work through some of those details because we have such a short time, not enough time to really go through and work through this. I'm seeing this as kind of an emergency requirement to get something for the community. Now, I say that, I'm also going to be fairly honest. I can't find anywhere in state law or in county code that says we have to be providing these services to, you know, to our residents in Gerlach. Truckee Meadows Fire is put into place in unincorporated Washoe County up to Township 22, which is about midway through Warm Springs Valley, doesn't include Red Rock. Those areas are provided by services to Truckee Meadows Fire. We pay them for those services. And so there really isn't a lot of, there's no dedication of taxes to pay for these services north of Township 22. We have interlocal agreements, we have mutual aid agreements with a lot of different agencies up there for some of the fire services and wildland fire. Got a contract with the state of Nevada. I still stay awake at night trying to figure out how we're going to take care of these residents that are in Gerlach because this is important to our residents. And so quite frankly, this is the best I could come up with in a short period of time to provide what the community has told me. Now, I detailed it in the staff report, I did go up there in March and I met with the community and said, hey, if you could have two out of the three things on the wall here, which would you rather have? And the choices were 24-hour a day, seven-day a week service. The choices were paramedic service and the choice was fire service. And so the majority of the dots that went up on the wall were 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and paramedic service. I think that's a pretty important piece for the community. Now, I was up at the community last week, we did pull this off the agenda, yeah, last week, I went up and met with the community, the Citizens Advisory Board. There are questions from the community on how we're going to deal with, you know, the use of the fire station. The entire time I've worked at Washoe County, I was unaware that we've kind of just been in there in a handshake deal. There is not a license or lease or anything in place. Washoe County has provided funding to expand the bays up at the community center and fire station. Just working through those little logistic pieces, as you heard the commenter from Gerlach, I've got about two weeks to figure that out. I don't know if I can get anything before this Board, but there are certainly, I think, some other ways we can get there. I was under the impression that it was much like the senior center where the GID owns the land and we have a lease on top of the building. We own the building. That apparently is not the case. So we're working through all of these little details, dispatch services, transition with the Pyramid Lake Pai tribe, but I needed to get something before this Board for consideration so we can either continue the service or I can go down a different path. So hopefully that answered all of the questions that were out there. I know there are still some unknowns and we're working through those, but this is getting near the last, you know, the last meeting we've got for this Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you and thank you for your hard work on this. Before I open it up to public comment, I will go to Vice Chair Herman on comments or questions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Dave, for your hard work. It's, I'm looking at it as kind of a temporary situation and we've got to still keep working on fixing it. Where this all started was back the first or second year that I was here. And so none of you really were involved in it and understand the history of it. We, what was brought before us at that time, and it was pretty contentious, was a report called the Blue Ribbon Report. And what that did, well, what it did was blow up everything we had established here, the background, and it's all about the volunteer fire people and who are just, I mean, just amazing people and a lot of them are EMS trained and all that. And so they took care of their town. There was 30 people up there in Gerlach on that fire, in that fire department as volunteers. We didn't really have to do as much. The Blue Ribbon, what it did was it took away what they had. And the same thing happened in your valley and in my valley. The volunteers were our saviors. I mean, they saved us from getting all burned up. And so we spent a lot of years here now, kind of a long reign of terror for people every summer worried about their home burning because of range fires and that sort of thing. So it was, it started a while ago, this thing. And what we did was the Board voted for against one and I guess you can imagine who was the one, but it started a big problem. And so Dave's trying to fix it and the people in Gerlach, I'm sure there's going to be some folks on, online, so I'd like to hear what they have to say, but we've been trying a lot of different things as Dave told us and really good ideas and it just didn't work out. So I, the whole... So, I, I, the whole thing about it is, because I, I know how it feels, but we're not two hours away. We, we might be treated a little bit later because of the timeframe it takes to get to us, south and north. And so we, you know, we've got to work out some way to get what we had back and not be under this. Maybe we can reverse that blue ribbon. I'm, I'm not sure, but we'll have to keep working on it and come up with some way. I don't want in my, on my watch to have a community all have dead people burned in their homes because we didn't do something. That's the whole thing. So, I'd love to hear from the rest of you and I would love to hear from the folks at Gerlach.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much and thanks for your passion, for your constituents. And Commissioner Garcia, do you have anything? Okay, Commissioner Andriola and Commissioner Clark, before public comment?
Yes, I have a comment. I think that it's incumbent upon this commission to do everything we can to help and support the folks, the citizens of our county who live out in Gerlach. We've got to figure out a way to, to help them any way we can if we have to give equipment or buy equipment and help with training of volunteers, whatever, whatever it's going to take. I mean, they had a vibrant volunteer fire department in the past, I don't know what it's like today, but if we can do anything with that. I mentioned it earlier today here, on our valley, Washoe Valley, we had volunteer fire departments there and we don't. So, we need to be, it's a good opportunity to work with the new chief, the new fire chief and see how we can support the rural parts of our county with volunteer firemen and, and other things. We need to find out a way to, to make sure that these folks are protected, whatever, whatever we can do to help. I'm on board with that, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, with that, Madam Clerk, we'll go to public comment.
Hi, Lisa Nash, for the record. Good afternoon, Commissioners. As a founding member and president of the current iteration of the Gerlach Volunteer Fire Department, I'm here to voice our concerns and commitment in light of recent developments. As you asked, Commissioner Clark, our volunteer department currently consists of five active members, three of us who are all risk, can do everything, and two who are fire alone, and six support admin members. We are always trying to recruit more, but it's a small community. And as everyone knows, volunteers are held to the same standard as paid these days and it takes a lot of training and a lot of money. And the Volunteer Association has been supporting the volunteers and their training and all the fees and everything on our own for many years. So, to get into this, we reluctantly support the proposed emergency services contract with Royal Ambulance, but only as an interim measure to avoid service disruption on July 1st. We feel there are three major problems with the new proposal. Number one is unclear details about the Gerlach Volunteer Fire Department's role. There's no clarity about who the Gerlach volunteers would report to, how they'd fund equipment, insurance, fuel, or whether a county budget even exists for support of a volunteer fire department. The second item is legal issues with Royal using the Gerlach Fire Station and the department's branding without proper agreements or permission. The contract gives Royal access to Gerlach's Fire Station, but Washoe County doesn't own the property as was just discussed. Additionally, there's no provision allowing for the use of the Fire Station or space in the bunkhouse for a volunteer fire department. If we're being asked to stand that up and do that on our own, whoever we report to, we need to be included in this. And that leads to Exhibit A, Section E references apparatus, and Exhibit, Exhibit, Exhibit D includes the four fire apparatus that would not be under the purview of Royal as they are not a fire department and should be excluded from this contract in our opinion. If we were to stand up as department, we need to have access to those and that's not included. It is all under the purview of Royal under this section. And as for branding, Exhibit A, Section Q of the contract improperly allows Royal to use the Gerlach Volunteer Fire Department name without agreement or consent. We ask to be removed from the contract, yet it's still in there. We are a separate entity and we're not subject to assignment or the use of our name or any branding by the county or anyone else. Thirdly, there's a flawed staffing plan that has been discussed that plans to staff one solo paramedic from December to March. This does violate Nevada EMS regulations and hasn't been submitted for state approval. Exhibit A, Section G, Part B alone threatens to unravel the entire plan in a matter of five months. There has been a history of instability. Gerlach has been left hanging before with shifting oversight and no sustained plans. The contract alone is not enough. A functional plan requires urgent collaboration from all.
Thank you so much.
We have Russell Bierley from Gerlach.
Russell Bierley, for the record. My president, Lisa Nash, did a pretty great job just now of summarizing our positions on this topic. There is time to get a lease before the GID board. They've expressed willingness to have an emergency meeting. We have two weeks, it's plenty of time for us to hammer out some kind of deal for the use of the Fire Station. This would be the third lease we've signed with Washoe County this year for the use of our property. We have staff housing for the Washoe County Road Yard at 380 Short Street, and then we have the Senior Center. Lease was renewed this year at 385 Sunset. There's no reason we couldn't substantially copy paste for the use of the, of the Fire Station and have all our ducks in a row to hit the ground running on July 1st. But I think what Lisa was getting on to when she ran out of time is that this plan has not been approved by state EMS and there's no indication that, that they will approve this plan. They told me that this level of coverage is not legal in Nevada and I don't know if that means that, that this contract is DOA, that it will never go into effect, or if that means that we have until December 1st to think of something else. And I have full confidence in our ability to think of something by December 1st. I don't have as much confidence to think of something by July 1st. So I think that's a determination that needs to be made by state EMS, you know, as soon as possible. And I'd like to thank Dave Solaro for all the work you put into all these avenues of inquiry that, you know, ultimately didn't get us anywhere. Thank you for asking literally everyone in northern Nevada if they would come help us solve this problem. And we look forward to collaborating with you and coming up with a plan to keep the fire service uninterrupted here in Gerlach, the way that we've, it seems like we're going to be able to keep medical service uninterrupted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Elizabeth Gambrell. I'm glad we're talking about this still. We've been talking about it for the 11 years I've been here. The original fire department that was here, the volunteers when I arrived, they had finally had enough of trying to get their regular day job done because they're volunteers and they had full-time employment and they would have to try and drive somewhere where Truckee Meadows was holding training. So when you're talking about training up here, you really need to consider that we're two hours from most everywhere in, in the, in the county. And if our people who are working full-day jobs then have to get off work, drive two hours to get three hours of training and drive home, it's not going to be functional. Please considering your plan, a way to make training here locally. And for corrections to the record, we are approximately 420 people up here because it is not Gerlach only. We have 2,200 square miles that our fire department, our sheriff department, our EMTs cover and they do a fine job. There was a fire here in town recently and it burned an entire house down, but it did not harm anybody in town even though it sat in the middle of a bunch of aging buildings. So I praise the people who have been doing the job. The thing with the volunteers, we have aged out in this town. Our average age is probably closer to 57, if not 60. So we've got some young people moving in, they are interested, but once again, they have full-time jobs and they need to be able to do their training here. With regards to the finances, Mr. Solaro knows what's coming here. We have about 87% of the BLM-owned land in our 5th District up here, not down in Incline, not in Tahoe. We have approximately 2,200 square miles and very little of it is actually occupied by homeowners, ranchers, or other people just living off the grid. It is mainly BLM land and for that, Washoe County gets over $4 million a year from the federal government. And in the provisions for the PELT, it directly states that it is to support fire protections for those neighborhoods that are surrounded by federal land that cannot produce revenue to pay for fire. So when you look at that and you divide it out by the amount of people living up here and who they're responsible to be looking after in this situation, we do pay high taxes, it just doesn't come out of quite our pocket. So I'd like you to consider that as well when you're looking at the budget next year. Mr. Solaro was kind enough to come up here and hold an open house and we did put the little dots on the board and we did say, you know, we really are interested in our health and welfare because we're aging and we are a long way from hospitals. But the three-month gap, I don't remember that being part of the discussion and that might be my error. So I don't know how people would feel about it if they actually came to some of these meetings and heard what's going on, but that's a whole nother story. I'm not happy with the three-month gap and I agree with Russell when it says we've got till December to figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Tina Walters, for the record. We are part of Washoe County and should have fire and EMS just like the rest of the county. I agree with Commissioner Herman that this is a temporary solution and, and hope to work on, on getting a longer-term solution. I'm one of the people that stepped up in 2016 when the discouraged volunteers walked away. The current volunteers would love to work with the county to come up with a longer solution. And thank you, Dave, for all your continued hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And in chambers, we have John Ray Hassan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Ray Hassan, Chief Administrative Officer with Royal Ambulance. First, just wanted to start today by really thanking Assistant County Manager Solara and Commissioner Herman for all of it, for all of their work on this agreement. Royal Ambulance is truly committed to working collaboratively and committed to working in partnership with all stakeholders, whether that's Washoe County, whether that's the Gerlach Volunteer Fire Department, the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and really any of the agencies or personnel in the area to do what we can to collaboratively support the Gerlach community. Certainly over the past year and a half, by nature of our workup, nature of our workup in the region, we've come to really appreciate the Gerlach community and I think see this as hopefully a unique opportunity to help provide some critical services. There's no desire to come in and take over and displace volunteers. Our goal is truly to work collaboratively, truly to work in partnership, and truly to do everything that we can to really be part of the community and be the best community advocates. Our organization has been in business for over 20 years. We do a little over 100,000 responses annually down in the Bay Area. We employ around 900 EMTs, paramedics, and nurses. We service a number of major events and major sporting venues. And I think this really presents a unique opportunity for us to leverage our industry knowledge, our industry experience, and our operations experience to hopefully help support, support a community that's in need. So, strong desire to be here collaboratively. You know, as to address the three-month gap, this was really an idea that was put forward in response to financial constraints. Certainly if the commission would like to approve a longer plan, would, would be no issue for us to be able to provide an EMT up there for the other three months out of the year. So, thank you very much and look forward to your vote.
Thank you so much.
We have nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we'll have a bit more commission discussion here. I, I would love to see, and the staff had done this for me a few years ago when Incline Village was asking about what their taxes go towards. And the staff did a really nice breakdown of what services the county provides and how we serve that district. And we actually found that the county is supplementing Incline Village in Crystal Bay and that was some new information for me and certainly information that I spread to the community so they could understand that and understand that the county is a partner, even if you're not seeing the county all the time, we are expending a lot of resources in that community. And so, I'd love, I don't know if there's capacity for this as a future discussion while we're working out this interim contract to figure out the finances, because I think that the PELT grant discussion is interesting, but how much does that capture the other services that the county provides? And it just would be good to have a holistic financial picture and I think the board would probably have, you know, be able to operate for a long-term plan if we had that as a discussion point, because I'm assuming Gerlach is not at their tax cap currently.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and yes, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you. I just wanted to piggyback on the payments in lieu of taxes conversation. We received almost $4.5 million in 2024 and they're not earmarked for anything in particular. So I'd like to get a better understanding of where that's going in the general fund, how those funds are being utilized and if there is a carve-out for Gerlach community.
Yes. And Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything else to add on this?
I think I said quite a few.
Yes, but you're, it sounds like you're leaning towards moving forward today and yes, and then where, there's a lot of details and it sounds like a further board discussion to happen in the future here soon. Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood your position.
We've got a lot of work to do.
We do, we do. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Garcia.
And along those lines, it might be something that we could talk to our congressional delegates. I know nothing at the federal level is certain at this moment, but if that's something we need to advocate for, it could be something, a BDR, that we could look at in the future.
I love that, yes, thank you. Any other board members have comments, Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've learned a lot in just a short time here. Lisa Nash had some good questions that need to be answered. Russell Bierley had more questions, Elizabeth Gambrell, and Tina Walters. We need to figure out a way to fix this. I learned that the BLM gives a certain amount of money to the county. We should have a certain percentage of that guaranteed and allotted to Gerlach. With the federal lands making a large percentage of their rural area and the federal government paying money to the county, we should have just a certain amount of that set aside to, to manage this. So, not only, they don't have to have their taxes raised, but things get covered. Bernie Man comes to mind. You know, Bernie Man shows up every year with 70 or 80,000 folks, you know, if we had an extra $3 or $4 on the ticket or donations or, you know, you see it around here a lot where people want to stuff the boot and we've got firefighters standing on the corner collecting. Maybe, maybe there's a way to, to encourage the, the festival participants to help with the communities they're going to. But there looks like there's some opportunities to, to, to get some money out, out there and we need to figure out how to do that and allot certain money right off the, just hard line on the budget that money goes to Gerlach for, for this type of service. And it's there, it's just a matter of aligning where it's going to come from and directing it right to Gerlach. So, I support anything that we can do, again, to help the rural areas of our county and Gerlach. So, that's my comments. Let's figure this out and figure out if Bernie Man might want to have a fundraiser, maybe fundraisers, maybe, you know, other, other things that we can do with the feds. If the federal government is giving us certain money to protect that area, that, that's what we should be using it for, at least part of it. Thank you.
All right, with that, Vice Chair Herman, do you want to make the motion on this?
I make a motion to accept this, item 15.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on the motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously and more discussion to come. Okay, with that, we are now going to move into the public hearing portion of the meeting. I will open the public hearing and I look to Mr. Solaro to help us with item 16.
Item number 16 is a public hearing and possible action to do a couple of things. One is consider a report of each property delinquent on its utility charges and the amount of each property's delinquency, along with any objections to the report. And two, after considering the report and any objections to it, determine whether to adopt the report and correspondently adopt Resolution 25-037 to collect certain delinquent utility charges on the tax roll. All sus- or partial numbers of affected properties are listed in the resolution and is accessible and is linked as an attachment on the agenda on the county commission's website. So this is-
So this is something we do yearly. This is out of the utility side of the world. Any of those that are delinquent on their charges, after we've tried and tried and tried to get to pay, end up being put over to the tax roll. So this is your opportunity to hear from the public, any objections they may have to that, and take action on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board on this item? I'm not seeing any. Madam Clerk, any public comment?
We have nobody signed in.
Okay. With that, unless there's any other comments from the board, I am looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move to hold a public hearing to consider a report of each property delinquent on its utility charges and the amount of each property's delinquency, along with any objections to the report.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, and looking for a second. Vice Chair Herman, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And, oh, it's on the screen. And that motion passes unanimously. And then we need another motion, and I don't know, Commissioner Andriola, if you want to help us with that, sorry, or whoever has it open. Okay, go ahead.
Let's see. Move to, you're talking about the second part?
Yes.
Move to adopt the report of each property delinquent on its utility charges and the amount of each property's delinquency, and a corresponding Resolution 25-037, that the certain delinquent utility charges be collected on the tax roll. All assessor parcel numbers of affected properties are listed in Resolution 25-037, accessible as a linked attachment on the agenda on the county commission's webpage.
Okay, looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move into the second public hearing, and Madam Clerk, if you could help us with this.
This will be ordinance number 1739, an ordinance amending the Washoe County Code by revising provisions related to citizens advisory boards. This was formerly Bill Number 1927.
Thank you very much. Do board members need a staff report on this? I'm not seeing that anyone does. And Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
Heidi Soper, followed by Pat Davison.
Yes, it's me again. Good afternoon, I'm Heidi Soper, Vice Chair of the Sun Valley Cab, and I just have a few topics I'd like to discuss quickly. I understand that you want to change the cabs to only one commissioner's district. Sun Valley has two, District Three and District Five. Why is Sun Valley, to the best of my knowledge, the only cab that has to do that? I have been told there are two other cabs that also have two commissioners that are not making the change. I hope that changes, because what's good for one is good for all. Also, if you could please clarify for me this. I read on your meeting agenda for today that cab boundaries would be extended one mile in order to allow those residences to be on the cab. Are the residences still included in our cab? This is what your agenda notes say, but unless I misunderstood Commissioner Garcia when she told me about this, this is not what she said. Everyone would still be welcome and included in our meetings in that one-mile extension. We will remain the citizens advisory board, but what are we advising our commissioners of? If we had developers to inform the community of their projects, discuss land use issues, or discuss the use of our taxes, et cetera, I could understand what we are advising you of, but nothing like that is happening. Sun Valley meetings are being changed, supposedly due to the county budget. We meet the first Saturday at 10:00 a.m. At the last cab meeting, we were informed of this, and the citizens were able to vote on what day they would like to move it to. We have upset people, as a lot of our attendees are seniors and do not like driving at night. I'm afraid our attendance is really going to suffer. As no one on the cab is involved in making this change, I am hopeful that Article Four, Number Five of the cab bylaws will be followed, as I'm sure this doesn't happen very often. And at our meeting, the cab did not inform the public of this change. The change was informed by our commissioner's support division, which is not what the bylaws say. And just to add, Bill is going to be very, very missed. He always had a smile on his face, and he puts smiles on every senior citizen in Sun Valley, so we will miss him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Davison, followed by Scott Finley.
Good afternoon, Chair of Hill Commissioners. My name is Pat Davison. I live in District Five and attend the North Valleys' cab. I'm not going to repeat my previous comments, although it was unfortunate that we don't have the minutes from the May 13th meeting, the first reading. At least, I couldn't find them. And it was a surprise to see that my two-page written comments submitted at that May 13th meeting were not included in the public input attachment to the staff report. Where I live, the people I know have little connection to the county, except for building permits, winter time snow plowing, and the occasional call to the sheriff's office. Your cabs provide a way to reach out to neighborhoods and communities and make a direct connection, not waiting for them to come to you. I support the new statement describing the cab's purpose to assist, advise, and collaborate with you as commissioners. It is forward-looking and respectful of your residents and businesses affected by Washoe County elected and appointed decision-makers. It's interesting to note that the cab bylaws, which Candy provided to me the other day, also emphasizes the role of informing the community. I hope that role of informing the community is not eliminated as we transition into the other parts of the cab reorganization. You are making some changes to the cabs, so in the spirit of assisting, advising, and collaborating, I suggest that we all come back in a year or two to see how the cabs are doing. Are they actually assisting, advising, and collaborating with you? And are they continuing in their role as information providers? So I just want to close with a shout-out to Candy Ramos. I had a couple of cab questions this last week, and she was lightning-fast getting answers back to me. I appreciate that so much. Thank you for your attention. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Scott Finley, followed by Susan Van Ness. Thank you so much. And Mr. Finley has documents to distribute.
Please enter my comment into the record pursuant to NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the United States Air Force. I urge you to reject the adoption of the proposed ordinance amendment. As a newly-appointed member of the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board, I have reviewed the cab member handbook and completed the required training. The handbook highlights a foundational principle. Members on cabs are selected with the intent to provide representation to the extent reasonably possible from a broad cross-section of the represented community. The idea is to ensure that all major viewpoints are examined and that any faction or special interest group does not dominate the citizens advisory board. This principle would be fundamentally undermined by the proposed amendment. The removal of Section 3, Subsection 8, which prohibits members of the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment from serving on cabs threatens the independence of cabs. Allowing members of these bodies onto cabs opens the door for conflicts of interest and undue influence. Cabs are meant to provide grassroots, community-level advice, not echo the perspectives of decision-making bodies. The risk of consolidating control in a narrow group is real and contrary to the spirit of community representation. Section 3, Subsection 5, provides that cab members who miss three consecutive meetings without just cause, as determined by the chair, are removed. However, the amendment also removes Section 3, Subsection 3, which previously allowed the county commissioner to appoint cab officers. With that mechanism gone, there is no clear process for holding a cab chair accountable if they themselves miss meetings. This creates a lack of oversight and opens the door to dysfunction or abuse. These changes reduce community trust, limit accountability, and remove necessary safeguards. Citizens advisory boards were never intended to be an extension of county planning bodies. They were intended to be independent forms for community voice to advise this commission. This amendment moves in the opposite direction. For these reasons, I urge you to vote against the proposed ordinance amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Van Ness.
Susan Van Ness, for the record, the North Valleys' cab, the North Valleys' gal. I would like to talk about the price of what they're saying we can't afford to have meetings at the North Valleys' library anymore. Why? Now, the North Valleys' librarian stated to Sally, our great coordinator from Washoe County, that we weren't allowed to go in there anymore. So we've had to move it to Coal Springs Community Center, which is nice, but it is too far for everyone to drive. Now, I don't think this librarian should have the right to say we can no longer hold our meetings there. Secondly, it's been brought up that the cabs are too expensive. So what I would like, if someone can give me a sheet, is a cost for what the cabs are costing, a detailed sheet, and then I'd like to compare it to the Washoe County Leadership Academy. I would like to know how much we're spending. It's a great, I saw the whole presentation. What a great thing to have for those chosen people. Some people aren't chosen or allowed in, but I would like to see an analysis, side-by-side of the numbers, what the cabs cost and how much the Washoe County Leadership Academy is costing, detailed for what the Washoe County leadership is costing us, because I think we'd see a big difference. The cabs are extremely important. I think it's around $40,000 a year, so if we are cutting, and we're cutting places to have the cabs, we might look into cutting some of that off of the Washoe County Leadership Academy also, because those people are wined and dined and taken a lot of places, and if we can't afford the cabs, maybe we can't afford that whole program. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have nobody else signed in.
Mr. Edwards, were you wanting to speak? It doesn't look like, sorry, I thought he stood up to speak. Okay. Thank you very much. We will now go to board comments. Vice Chair Herman, do you have comments or questions?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. We are, what I'm understanding about this is that it's just a beginning. Can I have you come up to the stand just and ask you this question? I, this is not your final version of this, is that correct?
Jennifer Gustafson, for the record. So what you have before you right now is a second reading and possible adoption of an ordinance. So yes, the draft that's in front of you is the final version of the ordinance. There are some other documents we've kind of talked a little bit about before. There's bylaws, there's handbook, there's resolutions, there's other documents pertaining to the cabs, that the plan is also to be looking at those documents and making some updates and amendments, but this particular item is just for Washoe County Code, and so this would be, yes, the final, the second reading and possible adoption of the code, the framework document related to the cabs.
So there will be no changes in the future, near future, to this document?
Well, that's really up to the pleasure of the board. If the board approves this today, then 10 days from now would be the effective date, and then this would be your new Washoe County Code.
So some of the things that were brought up today I had already been concerned about, and that is that the regulations for cabs, there are some definite changes of, you know, there are things that conflict the law, you know, the regulation has, as the cabs were formed from the legislation. And so I won't be able to accept what you've got here for that reason until it's clear in my mind that, that we aren't going against some of the original purposes and descriptions of what the cabs were. So it's a start, but I'm not done with it, so I won't be able to vote for it because there's things on it that, and comments that have been made with good facts that I agree with. So that's what I have to say, and thank you for coming up to answer that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia? Okay, Commissioner Andriola?
Ms. Gustafson, right. I was going to try and catch you. I didn't know if I should wait. I tried to catch you quickly. I really appreciate all of the hard work on this, and I think that some of the folks who commented, I don't remember them attending the first full explanation of a lot of this. And so just for clarification purposes, some of the items, whether it's Section 3, Subsection 8, the point about, you know, allowing the BOA and the conflict, this ordinance hasn't been looked at in years, and so this is the process to then bring it current? So some of the things when it was created were applicable but aren't applicable any longer. And actually, I would just ask if, from a comment standpoint for me, it allows actually no restrictions, so somebody on the Planning Commission, you know, and the Board of Adjustment could now serve. In fact, it's the opposite. The reason it wasn't allowed is, my understanding is, because at the time, there was development that went before the cabs, and so there was an inherent conflict, potential conflict of being on the cab and being on the Planning Commission, or being on the BOA and on the cab. So those, the provision of removal is actually, from my perspective, it opens up more opportunity for everyone to serve, even if you're on the Planning Commission or the BOA.
That is correct.
Exactly. So I think that there may be just a little bit of misunderstanding in terms of anything being stripped. In fact, it's being opened up more. Would you agree with that analysis?
Yes, members of the Planning Commission, members of the Board of Adjustment, could also serve as cab members with the code amendments in front of you.
And with the cleanup of this ordinance, and I'm using the word cleanup, I'm going to change that, would the update of this ordinance then aligns with where it was and the provisions that were in place then, but don't align the way it is now, and this now aligns that? Is that correct, why this even happened in the first place?
Well, as far as making amendments are concerned, the board has given direction, of course, to update documents related to the cabs, and so we started with code. And there are some cleanup amendments in here that are based on Nevada Open Meeting Law, for example, that, you know, are essentially being made because our current code doesn't closely comply with Nevada Open Meeting Law in a few sections, and is also just repetitive of current Nevada Open Meeting Law requirements in a few sections. And then, yes, there's some other edits in here as well that are really considered cleanup, essentially.
So the process, this ordinance is just the beginning of the process, because we'll just back up all the way. We first had to vote on opening it up.
Correct.
And that gave you the legal authority, if you will, to begin that process of looking at, as an example, open meeting law, there was conflicting information, and so it has been now cleaned up, if you will. And so it has been now cleaned up, if you will. So first, we had a vote to open it up. Then we had a first reading that went into in-depth on pretty much everything. And now this is really the second reading that, of nothing that changed from the first time.
Correct. There's, there's been no amendments since the first reading. That was before the board last month.
And so I hope that there's an opportunity for, whether you're here or watching, or even look at it later, to, to read the minutes and to watch the video of the original first reading, which went over in-depth on all of this. I'm going to support this because it's needed. Right now, there's out of compliance, in my opinion, with the way, with the way it's written. There will be additional processes in terms of, you'll be working on the handbook, you'll be working on everything, that, that will then be publicized. So none of this will be, in terms of the spirit of full transparency, done without public feedback and input and, and cabs as well. The aligning for the districts was very important to my district because I've had people who have applied, who live in my district, who the way that it's written aren't eligible. And so for me, that is exclusionary, not intentional. But I believe the way that this is written gives more opportunity for everyone to participate in the districts to which they, they live and work in a collaborative effort with the commissioners that we are dedicated to support, our constituents, on whatever the issues are that they bring. So I, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm going to support this as written because I think it gives the clarity that's needed, the legal compliance that's needed. And I want to thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Really, thank you so much. And I know it's not over. There's more to come. So step one of many steps. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Clark?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other board comments, and we take in public comment, and I am looking for a motion on the second reading, please.
Madam Chair, I'll move to conduct the second reading and adopt ordinance number 1739, which amends Washoe County Code, Chapter Five, revising provisions related to citizens advisory boards and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on that motion from the board, seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
And it's on your screen. And that motion passes three to two with Vice Chair Herman and Commissioner Clark in the negative. So we will now move into our final public comment. Mr. Slaro.
Item number 18 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers, and comments are to be made to the commission as a whole, limited to three minutes per person.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
We have nobody signed in.
Oh, my gosh, shocking. Then with that, we will, we will move into item 19. Mr. Slaro.
Item number 19 is commissioners, county managers, announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything else for us?
Just that I will be busy with GIRLAC again, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for your dedication on that. I know you've been working hard on it for years. So, board members, Vice Chair Herman, anything else?
No.
Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Andriola? Commissioner Clark?
One last comment and a request for information. I didn't bring it up earlier, item number seven on the agenda. I'd like to find out how the county disposes of surplus or used vehicles and equipment and a report on that, how it's, how things are sold and what the process is. I'd like a little more detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you all for a great meeting. It is 1:34, and we are adjourned.